You know, they're gonna have a hard time with it. And I'm sure that you would do as well as anybody would. I just want to make that clear that I wasn't spelling, you know, I wasn't picking out you particularly.
Thank you. Okay. So, that being said, any other comments about the minutes? No? Will someone make a motion to prove him as written?
I will.
He submitted a motion. Who wants to second it?
I will.
Jeffrey's seconded it. Any further discussion? No, it wasn't fair to say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, moving right into the good stuff. We're just gonna have a quick discussion about counsel for the applicant. Does the applicant want to? Do we need to talk about it even at this point? George?
Not in my opinion, but if any of you on the board or the public wanted to comment.
Right, okay. So, you all may know that Peter Freeman withdrew from the application. So, I don't know if anybody in the public specifically wants to speak about that issue. Don't necessarily want to get that bogged down in it. Not seeing any hands. We're gonna move on. I assume, Arthur, you're representing the applicant now. Okay. So, then, moving on. Just gonna get right into the applicant describing where they want to, what they want to do.
Hi, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Go ahead, though. Go ahead, Arthur.
Thank you again for the record attorney, Arthur Reed, representing the applicant at today's hearing. Since the last meeting, the applicant has submitted various materials, including a memo as to our position as to the status of this matter, which we feel is ready to be wound up and closed at today's meeting. We also have submitted stormwater analysis and responses to the comments by Mr. Cheshire, which Don Bracken will discuss. We also have submitted a memo from counsel relating to housing issues that would relate to the status of restricting the condo units to year-round residents in Nantucket. And with that, I would like to have Don Bracken come up to the microphone and present the changes to the plan as a result of the work that he's done since the last meeting and Mr. Cheshire's comments. And then Mary Ann Hanley will run through the status of the waivers related to the project. And we'll then be able to answer any questions and have any further discussion that the board thinks is appropriate.
Okay, but before we get to Don, I just had some general comments and statements or questions, basically. I guess I can address this to Don. Which plan are we talking about? Or which plan are we going to be talking about tonight?
We're gonna be talking about the last official set that we submitted as an engineering plan dated October 25th. It was a four-sheet set that had the lots on it, had the condo buildings on it. It had an overall grading plan and general utility plan. Didn't have the same amount of detail as the first set, so these were sort of working plans, but they were the last official set. So what we did was, we took that set, pretty much, the roads are in the exact same locations, the condo buildings the same, the individual houses are the same, everything is pretty much the same, including a lot of the drainage jambs. We took that, went through all of Cheshire's previous comments regarding the last plan, which we addressed with this plan set. We also addressed a lot of the drainage comments. We completely updated the drainage analysis to match this set. And we, this is the 100-unit set.
This is the 100-unit. That's what I was getting to.
That's what we keep referring to.
Okay, so it's the 100-unit set. The 156-unit set is off the table. Because in the memo, it specifically says here that you want us to vote on the 156-unit proposal, which I don't understand. Then we get all sorts of packet information on the 100-unit set. So I am, for one, very confused. A little bit, not angry, but disappointed. I thought we were getting pretty close in terms of the other, the other plan. I didn't think we were so far off that we'd get a memo saying, you know, vote on the 156-unit or, or nothing. So I don't, I don't know what quite happened between the last meeting and now.
The application, no, I think we've always been, the 156-unit plan, which is the original submission, has always been before you. We have presented the 100-unit plan as an alternative that if it is acceptable to the board, would be acceptable to us, assuming there are no conditions attached to it that would make it uneconomic or inappropriate. But the 156-unit application is before you. You can, you can take any action on either the 156-unit or the 100-unit, or make any other decision in the matter that you, in your discretion and operating within your jurisdiction, want to do. But the 156-unit plan is still a viable option as far as we're concerned.
So is that, can you show us that plan on the?
The 156?
I just want to be clear. I mean, that's the one with the condos closest, closest to the road.
And we don't have all that information, so I'm just, it'd be nice to see.
I mean, we have it, but you'd have to go back in the archive.
I'd have to go back to my car and dig several bunch of stuff.
Right.
It's in the previous package. I mean, you have all that material.
Well, it was just a little confusing when the memo specifically says, I'm gonna read it, if I can find it quickly. But it, it basically said, therefore, the board's decision should be issued on the original proposal submitted, or on or about April 12, 2018, with its complete set of supporting exhibits and required submissions. I mean, that, that's pretty clear to me. Or it sounds clear, but it isn't clear, because then we get all this information on the 100-units. And again, I just, I just, I wasn't, I wasn't shocked, but I was certainly, again, pretty disappointed, because I thought we were getting pretty close to something that was a, a relative win-win. And to be told to vote on the 156-units sort of says, hey, sorry we wasted your year of your life.
No, that's, that's, that's not right. I mean, you, you can make whatever decision. You have two plans before you. One is our original submission. That's not off the table. The other is an alternative plan that, as submitted, would be acceptable to us. And you can act in the context of those matters being before you.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Hi, George Pucci from Town Council's office. I, I just had a quick question. Why aren't we working off of at least a 92-unit plan that was the result of the design workshop?
I have no idea.
Can we ask the applicant why we're not doing that?
It's a great question.
Yeah, through me, there's, there's the question. Why aren't we working with the 92, the last plan we were working with?
So, where we got with the last plan, the 92-unit version, there was still, as we laid out in our memo, quite a few things that you guys requested we do, which we felt we couldn't do. So we hadn't developed that further at this point. And the two plans that we feel we've submitted, everything that we would need to submit to you for in order for you to make a decision are the 156 and the 100 unit. As we also mentioned in the memo, any of the other concept plans that we've submitted along the way can be considered by you all in any decision that you make.
Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
So, do you guys, you guys obviously must have a better sense, working with as many 40Bs as you have. Is this common practice to have two, possibly three is what it sounds like, maybe four? I don't even know. Applications at the same time?
No, it really isn't. I mean, I, I can.
It's become a multiple-choice 40B right now.
I'm, I'm surprised at the approach, because while, while a developer, while it's not uncommon for a developer to keep their initial plan on the table, at least for potential appeal, that, that's something that's done. So if they say, well, you know, if they're trying to hold it over you to say, well, we're, we're still holding our 156-unit plan, and if we're forced into an appeal before HAC, that's gonna be our, our plan for the purpose of appeal. That, that's something that happens. I, I don't agree with the approach.
With the bouncing back between this many units to this many, and now we're doing this application, and yeah, we discussed this, but now we're doing this. It's just, it's overwhelming.
So having, having said that, while that would not be an uncommon thing, if, if you go through the process that this board has gone through with the applicant and, and with project opponents, including the design workshops that occurred in good faith, and you end up with a plan that then you're trying to work off of, it doesn't make sense to be ping-ponging back and forth, mentioning the 156-unit project, now presenting apparently the 100-unit project plan, which, this did not come out of that design workshop meeting. So it would make sense at this point to be working off of the 92-unit plan. You put a lot of time and effort in, including the developer, in having those workshops. People participated in it. People who were heavily opposed to the project participated in good faith in the design workshop and worked in good faith to try to come up with a palatable, at least, design to start working on. And the other real problem with this, of ping-ponging back and forth, is now you're left with a situation where, you know, you need to discuss waivers, waivers requested for the project. So, if you're precluded from now working off of the 92-unit plan, then you need to have that discussion in the context of 100-unit plan. Another issue that has come up, and there was quite a bit of information exchanged back and forth yesterday, had to do with the sewer issue. You can't, there's no way of, of completing that process in good faith. And you acting as, you know, the Board of Sewer Commissioners for the purpose of 40B, if, if you're left unclear of what plan you're dealing with, and there's a laundry list of items that have been provided from Weston and Sampson, and they're the town's sewer consulting engineering firm, and they're perplexed as to what is being submitted, what plan they're working off of, what they're, what review they're supposed to do. And if the, if the applicant is intending to engage in a good-faith process with you, you would think that they would at least commit to the 92-unit plan. They're, they're not willing to make certain concessions, apparently, on that plan. That's their, their right to do, but don't make it confusing about what plan needs to be reviewed for the purpose of, of technical issues, that you don't have the ability to review those and discuss them in, in the context of alternate plans. You have to have one plan and a proposal for Weston and Sampson to review on just this one distinct issue. They need to be able to complete a technical analysis and get back to you with their recommendations so that you can act as the local Board of Sewer Commissioners in, in the 40B process. So it's just an example of, of, you know, the process here. You know, I, I have to say, you know, I would urge the, the applicant to engage in a more realistic, good-faith process with you about working off of the plan that came out of the, the result of the design workshop group. Start to identify the remaining issues that need to be reviewed and considered by you in issuing your final decision on this. You're not able to do that by the applicant insisting that you close the hearing tonight. So you need a couple of commitments from them about the plan that they're working on, their, their willingness to work with you, even if they're saying, we, we won't compromise on the number of units. That's all well and good. That's a position that they're entitled to take. But if, if you're saying you won't compromise on the 92-units, then commit to a plan that then, you know, can properly be reviewed. And then, and it goes back to you. And then you can discuss waivers with respect to that specific project. Then you end up with a vote, either to deny or approve of conditions. If you end up reducing the number of units for site design issues, that, that is not okay with the applicant, then at least you have a, something concrete, you know, in an, in an appeal type of situation, that, okay, we approved 68 units, we don't agree to go below 92. You can limit the issue, at least for the appeal at that point. But to go back and forth in this vague process is, is not productive, in, in my opinion.
Thank you. Ed, did you want to speak?
For the record, Ed Marshawn, chapter 40B advisor to the board. As most of you aware, I've worked on many 40B projects, representing both, or advising ZBAs and developers, more than 150 projects. I have never worked on a project where the meeting is about to be closed, or the applicant is requesting the meeting to be closed, where there isn't an agreement on which plan is gonna be reviewed. It's, it's just impossible, as George said, to think about waivers, and it, it's a waste of time. And again, I'm disappointed, too, having played a role in the work sessions. I thought we came up with, the, the entire group that participated came up with some very positive constructive suggestions. I think the plan that resulted from that, even though there may be a disagreement in terms of the total number of units, was a better plan for both the applicant, the residents, and the town.
Thank you. I agree. I thought, I thought we were getting, as I said, I thought we were getting close to a plan that was a win-win. Not that everybody was going to be happy, but that it was, we were getting close, I thought. And then, then, then we get this. So, how does everyone else feel about it? Wordwise?
I feel the same.
I feel the same.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, if George isn't gonna say it, and, and good faith is the operative phrase, this here is bad faith. This move here is bad faith. Here, we've been, we've been going down this road, we've been doing this dance in good faith, and here, suddenly, we pull out the plans from April, or whatever. That, to me, is bad faith, and, you know, I'll go on the record in saying that.
Thank you. I, I agree.
I agree.
It wasn't happening with the 92, but, I mean, I thought it was much closer to where we should have been.
Yeah, dealt with a lot of the issues.
I really felt that if the applicant had come back with some concessions from the 92, it would have been something I probably could have.
In short, I feel like I've wasted a year, and every single one of these people in this room got slapped in the face. That's how I feel.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you. So, again, I mean, I, I, I just didn't think we were that far apart. None of us believe, we don't want to drag this on either. We would like to wrap this up. And we thought we were getting close to that resolution. And then we get this letter, again, asking us that the decision should be issued on the original proposal submitted, blah, blah, blah. I will give you the last sentence, says, "We still hope that this difficult process may yet result in a plan both the board and we can agree upon, but given the current state of the discussions and distance between us, we feel it is simply time for you to make your decision." I don't see how you can hope that the plan is, the difficult process is gonna result in a plan we both like if you want us to close the hearing. It is that, the two don't go together.
Well, the plan that we're presenting to you tonight is the 100-unit plan. That's what we're prepared to go forward with. And we do want to close the hearing tonight.
Well, first of all, we have an extension, I believe, till when?
April 5th.
April 5th, 4th? So we could meet again before then?
Yes, you could.
Whether or not you want to close the hearing?
You could, you could.
I appreciate that. I, I don't even know where to go from here. So we have to go backwards instead of forward?
And, and basically now in one meeting, do all the work that we've been doing since this plan was submitted? I mean, that's just unrealistic, and it feels like, it feels like we reinvent the wheel here every meeting. I haven't sat on that many 40Bs, but this seems like every meeting, it's completely confusing. We're looking at, there's no clear path, and I feel like we've been trying to push the path forward, but, again, getting, reading this memo, it did sort of feel like a slap in the face. Like, I don't understand how we're back here, when I really, I felt the same way when we were closing that meeting, or continuing the public hearing at the last meeting, and we had the suggestions of what it was that we would like to see. I really thought we'd get a plan, I didn't think we'd get an entire, you know, all of our wish lists would be either granted or able to be done, but I thought there'd be some concessions. And then just hearing tonight that you're, we can, you want us to close the hearing, and the 92, oh, sorry, rather, the 100-unit plan is there if there are no conditions and it's, it's acceptable to you as submitted. So we can't even have any comment on it at this point. I mean, that, that's what you just said. That just doesn't, just doesn't work in this process. It's a process.
You can have any comments you want, and you can put on any conditions you want. The question is, will it be acceptable to us?
Well, you've already said it won't. You said you, the 100.
I'm saying it would definitely be acceptable as submitted.
Yeah.
Conditions, we would have to review after they're imposed.
Okay, 'cause earlier you said if no conditions.
No, he, he did say, if there weren't any, if the conditions didn't make it uneconomic.
Right, right. But, but the conditions, the suggestions that we gave last week, they said they are not willing to make them, and those were the, those were the suggestions.
I'm curious on the economic issues. They said right in their letter that our suggested changes to the 92-unit plan, we're going to render the project.
Economic feasibility.
Yeah, we're going to undermine the project's economic feasibility. Is that a statement saying we're making it uneconomic, and can we therefore review the, the, the economics of the project?
I, I think the, the statement in there is, is vague as to what it means. And, and one of your members picked up on it last time about the, you know, the year-round housing issue. Conditions that you may impose on the project that may not be consistent with the applicant's concept is not the same thing as being, rendering a project uneconomic. And, and I don't know if the language that they're using is purposely vague or not, but they're not saying that any further conditioning of this project renders it uneconomic. And, and maybe they're doing that because they don't want to provide pro forma information. So it raises a couple of issues. Number one, you need clarity from the, from the applicant as to what exactly they're arguing on that. Number two, it's a complete sham, really, to say, well, close the hearing tonight, because if you're imposing conditions that render it uneconomic to the applicant, then obviously there needs to be a further hearing, at least one hearing session for them to prove why it renders it uneconomic. Otherwise, what's gonna be appealed if they're unhappy with your decision? What issues? The, the HAC doesn't have jurisdiction over something to talk about the economics of the project until the applicant has said that a particular condition renders it uneconomic. So we need to be less vague about that. And, and you, you have jurisdiction over the site plan issues. In terms of going forward on that, on this, I would suggest a couple of things. Not, not that there would be a private conversation, but perhaps in a, you know, a brief, just a break in the session, so that we can talk to the applicant a little bit further, see if this is really what, how they want to proceed. And then we go back on, you know, the public hearing to determine how they want to proceed on this. And if they don't want to do that, or you, or you don't want to do that with them, what I would recommend you do is, you work off of the revised plan that came as a result of the design workshop meetings. So you start working on the 92-unit plan. You're the ones with jurisdiction over site plan issues. As a result of that process, the only, you know, workable site plan that was presented by this project is the 92-unit project with the, with the roadway in the middle, those types of design issues. So if the applicant wants to say, we're, we're taking our ball, we're going home, then you engage in the process. You work off of that plan, determine what further information that you need to render a decision on that revised plan. Do as much as you can tonight. Have your action items teed up for your continued public hearing session, perhaps on April 4, and then be at least in the position to render a decision at that time.
Okay. All right. Ed, did you want to speak about?
If I could clarify how financial peer reviews work on 40B projects. Normally, there's a consensus on a plan. Based upon that plan, the board drafts a decision. The most important part of the decision are the conditions. If at that point, and, and the hearing is open, so you can continue a dialogue with the applicant. The applicant says, "We think conditions 32 and 16 will make this project uneconomic." The board might say, "We don't think so, and therefore, we're gonna exercise our right to retain a financial peer review," or commission a financial peer review. And then they do the review, and based upon that, you might say, "Well, condition 16 appears that it may in fact make the project uneconomic," and you might decide to sort of redraft that condition or eliminate it. The difficulty here is timing, because you can't accept any additional information once the hearing is closed. So, given that we're, we're reaching sort of near the end of time, because everybody wants to get this over with, but the critical issue is, there's not a consensus plan here. I mean, I really thought we were headed to the 92-unit plan. I would agree with Susan McCarthy that you establish some design objectives. It would be great if the app, I, I really expected the applicant would go back, say, "We can do A, B, and C, we can't do D and E." And at least, in the spirit of fair play, try to come up with a plan that improved upon the last one. Didn't give you all that you wanted, they didn't get all that they wanted. But that's the way 40B should work.
Thank you. Can you, can you briefly touch on, or maybe George should do this, again, this whole notion that there, there's a difference between making the project uneconomic? That, that means it doesn't meet the threshold of 15% to 20% profit?
Remember, in chapter 40B, the applicant gets certain benefits. Obviously, the waivers that you're about, or may be about to discuss. In return for that, there are requirements placed on the applicant. One, 25% of the units have to be affordable to households at 80% of median family income. Obviously, there's an economic cost to providing those units. Two, 40B limits the profit that an applicant can make on a project. And that limit is 20%, but HAC has issued decisions that say, anything below 15% is considered to be uneconomic. But the developer is allowed to make that 15%, and also, as a builder, and very often on for-sale projects, as is in this case, the applicant is also the builder. The builder's also allowed to make a profit from the work he or she does on construction, which is reasonable. If you weren't gonna make a profit, you'd hire another builder to do it. So that's how economic and uneconomic is defined in 40B ownership projects.
Okay, I'm, my, I, I get that part, and I appreciate that explanation. And, but then there's the second part of this particular application where the, where the proponent, I mean, the applicant, has continued to say that because they want to supply a certain segment of the housing market, supply, provide, sorry about the feedback.
Did you say that, Susan?
Maybe it's the little recorder?
Maybe that your microphone may be right.
Sorry about that. Check, check. Anyway, to, the, the fact that the applicant wants to supply a certain segment of the Nantucket market, they, they say the project is infeasible. There's a difference between infeasible and uneconomic as it's defined by HAC, or whomever the state. My question is, and I, I think I've heard the answer from George, do we have to care about infeasible? In other words, the developer isn't making as much money as they would like? Is that, how do we deal with that particular issue?
If, if in fact, we should note that in this, in this package, there's a opinion from Kirkides and Boosting. I've reviewed that. I, I think the idea of trying to provide housing for year-round residents is terrific. I, I think the idea of trying to provide housing for year-round residents is a terrific idea. That opinion is very carefully crafted, I should defer to George, he's the lawyer, but it doesn't say it's a slam dunk that you're going to be able to do that. What concerned me about that program, there were two or three things. One, when you read the program, a year-round resident is someone who lives there for more than a hundred and eighty-three days, or at least, I'm sorry, at least a hundred and eighty-three days. I, and it, it's not restricted to current residents of Nantucket. You could be from Connecticut, buy one of these units, live there for a hundred and eighty-three days, have a summer place in, in Florida. Two, there's no income restriction. Three, to put some teeth into that, to try to make it work, you might say that it should be restricted to first-time home buyers. In forty B, the twenty-five percent of the units for the eighty percent household incomes, there's an income limitation, there's an asset limitation, and you must qualify as a first-time home buyer. So, that has some meat in it. There's a, a very strict deed restriction in terms of limiting the resale price of the home also. So, to get to your question, I, I don't think that you get a pass on creating a good, reasonable design and density, even though your plan to provide these year-round housing units or condos is very well-intentioned. And I think the applicant has said they're, they're selling those at below-market prices. Well, I think if you do an economic review, you'd say, well, if, if you weren't selling those, if the, if it were borderline economic or uneconomic, you'd say, nobody's forcing you to sell those units at a below-market price.
Right. So, that, that, that's my confusion. I mean, you have this piece out there that is putting a lot of pressure on everything, supposedly on the applicant's finance, financial feasibility. It's putting pressure on infrastructure, it's putting a pressure on everything. And how, how do we get by that issue?
Yeah, no, if, if, if your design review is, is, is telling you that you're overburdening the site, and so you continue to tweak it on that ninety-two unit plan, the fact that you may be either cutting down on the amount of, or eliminating their concept of the year-round housing, really isn't relevant for jurisdictional issues for forty B, because they're not affordable units, and they're not the reason that, that you have jurisdiction over this project under the comprehensive permit law in the first place. They have to provide a certain percentage of affordable housing that qualifies as affordable housing under forty B to get before you want it. The year-round housing doesn't involve that type of housing at all. And, and before, we talked about a good faith process. If the, the applicant is in good faith about their concept of the year-round housing, that's an important dialogue to be having as part of this design review process that you're going through. That, in other words, they get to a certain number, and they say to you, we, we can't, we can't do it because we really, we believe in this concept of the year-round housing, even though it's really not a jurisdictional issue for you, but this is the project that we would like to, to build. And you say, well, the site design and, and the other issues with regard to site design only makes sense at a, you know, a certain number of project below somewhere ninety-two. The fact that, that that may, you know, again, either eliminate the concept entirely of the year-round housing, or reduce the percentage of the year-round housing that they're providing that's not subject to forty B, is, is not something that gives them the right to appeal. It would have to be a reasonable condition. You, you have, you can impose conditions on this project that are, number one, reasonable, and number two, don't render the project uneconomic. And again, you recognize that Ed explained, you know, with more detail about the concept of what they are proposing. But in terms of the legality and the jurisdictional issues, you know, changing the concept of their plan is not the same thing as rendering the project uneconomic.
Okay. Yeah, I, I for one would like to say, and I think the, bless you, board agrees that the, the concept is well-intentioned and laudable, but again, it's putting a lot of pressure on every other part of this project. I, I for one would like to see, you know, I, I don't, well, let's put it this way, I don't think the intention is reason enough for us to approve hundred-foot-long buildings, impervious surface everywhere, underground units, which were, I believe, part of the hundred plan, hundred-unit plan. I think it should be on a smaller scale. Do, do less good. I mean, again, I, I prove that this concept works the first time. Come back again with another forty B. But right now, it's just, it's just too much. So, again, I, I would ask you to reconsider the notion of wanting us to close the hearing and continue the dialogue.
So, I think what I heard from Mr. Pucci is, is my understanding of how you guys can go about closing the hearing. And he had indicated that you can consider any one of the concept plans that we've submitted along the way. We submitted the, the first hundred unit plan on October third. That's almost six months ago, and we've been-
Can you talk a little louder, please?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, that, that initial plan for a hundred units was submitted October third, and since then, we've submitted many iterations and concept versions that meet, well, to us, was very close to the minimum criteria to, to satisfy our mission and to create a viable plan. And so, at one point, we did an eighty-eight unit version, we did a hundred-and-four unit version, we did a ninety-two unit version. We've, we've been bouncing in and out of a program that we thought would work for us. And there, there, there have been some different components within those various plans. You know, we had a conversation back in January where we thought that there was too much room between us at that time to really get to where we were going to find mutual ground. And at that time, Ed Marchand suggested the idea of the work group as a potential way to bring us closer, closer, which we did back in January in good faith. I think we've been very in good faith throughout this process, so, you know, we spent a lot of time on that process. We, we embraced a plan that we thought you guys liked, and then we got to a point where, you know, we thought we had put our best foot forward, and we had come up with something that, you know, was the best that we could do. And I guess the way we were saying it, and what you guys were hearing, was not clear enough. But I thought that we were basically saying, we can't reduce it further. And there, that we've always acknowledged the fact that there's been this tug-of-war between density and our want to create a middle-income piece as part of what we're doing, and from day one.
Do, do, do you agree that that's putting undue pressure on the, on the situation? And, and that if you reduce that component a small bit, that maybe we could get to a mutual happy place?
So, we can't, we don't feel like we can reduce it, and that's the problem, and that's kind of where we've been. I mean, as far as the design itself, I think we've shown an incredible amount of flexibility. We've embraced a plan that the town's designer basically created. I don't think that it's putting undue pressure on the lot, but, you know-
Oh, it, 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 I mean, at, at its present bedroom, just as a metric, which is easy enough to understand, I, I think at its present, this is the ninety-two plan, ninety-two unit plan, I think, and I may get, get my numbers wrong, but I think it's twenty bedrooms and acre. So, I mean, that, that's, that's-
Twenty point seven-four bedrooms per acre.
Right. I mean, that, that is significantly higher than any place here.
I disagree. It's not higher than Tacoma Green.
Tacoma Green is a-
It hasn't even been built.
And it's a workplace-
Well, who knows this?
It's a workplace, or whatever that special-
Workforce.
Workforce, housing development that is all rental, all counts against the shy.
How about Richmond Group?
I, I'm not familiar with the details of Richmond, thank God.
Well, it's not a hundred either. I don't know how dense that is.
I don't either.
It's not a forty B, so.
Right.
It's a forty R, but, but anyway, I mean, the point is, you made a statement that this, this level of density doesn't exist, and, you know, it's very much intended to address affordable housing and middle-income housing, as are these other projects.
Well, go ahead, George. Help me out.
Well, I, you know what? So, it sounds like we don't need the adjournment to, to get a little good faith out. You know, it, I mean, I would, I would recommend we at least start working off of the ninety-two unit plan. Start conducting the hearing the way the hearing should go. And if, if the applicant doesn't like the way it's going, then they're, they're free to insist on, you know, closing the hearing at the next public hearing session that you set up, if you choose to have another one. But I would, I would recommend, stop wasting everybody's time, get that plan off the, the screen, because you don't intend to work off of that plan.
There's too many changes.
Too many changes, and, and it doesn't make any sense from a, from a site design standpoint. They just said they engaged in the design review process in good faith, they came up with a plan they thought they could live with. Well, let's start working off of that plan, at least, to, to try to use the time as wisely as we can. And I, and I would also recommend to the applicant, when we engage in the process further about going back and forth on, on issues like the sewer issues, which are, you know, the, the town's consultants are trying to give feedback to the applicant's engineer, I would recommend strongly, you know, you present a plan that's responsive to what, you know, the consultants are recommending, and you do it off of the plan that the board intends to vote off of, and, and not this plan, because it's a waste of everybody's time. So, I, I would recommend, you know, as a starting point, you at least start at the ninety-two unit plan, start to discuss design review issues with respect to that, and if there's time, hopefully, you start to get into the waivers that are requested by the applicant, so at least you can have a public hearing on the waivers that are required for this project. And then, you know, as, as I said before, you know, hopefully, the applicant would see the light that there's a lot of issues to be discussed in a further public hearing session after April four, but if forced to do it, then at least be in the position to vote as best you can on a, on a plan on, on the next public hearing session.
Okay. Thank you. As to the waivers, George, I don't even know how we would begin the discussion on the waivers, because their waiver list relates to the hundred units.
Right. So, it, like, so for instance, following the discussion about the, you know, your design review of the ninety-two unit plan, that waiver discussion can take the context of that. You'll, you, you don't have a better set, because they haven't provided it. Go after the, go under the latest waiver request submitted, go through them one by one, and, you know, what would be needed for the, under, by the applicant under the ninety-two unit plan, they can specify to you. What may not be needed under the ninety-two unit plan, they can identify to you, and, and go through them like that. You're going to have to have a, but the, the main part of where the rubber meets the road on forty B projects is waivers, because until you isolate that, you don't really know what it is that you're being asked to do. So, you, you've got to get into that process one way or another, and, and really, the only viable way of doing it at this point is to just use their latest list and start going through them for what they require.
Okay. All right. So, I guess we're going to talk about the ninety-two unit plan.
We don't, do we have a-
Do we have a slide of the ninety-two? Who's in charge of the slides?
I can hold it up.
Could be Carol Merrill?
You probably have an old, can you download it?
Oh, I have one. I'm sure I can get one in there, but if, if, owner can pull it up.
Yeah. Off the old list, the old submission.
I'm, I see you.
Was that the March fourth? Was that the, oh, no, that was our-
All right, while we're looking-
While you're looking, I thought it was a good time.
All right.
Talk about the sewer, just for clarification on the sewer issues that Mr. Pucci brought up.
Go ahead.
If you recall, one of the meetings in the cafeteria, we did discuss sewer. We presented a schematic plan of two sewer options. One was to tie into a six-inch main or the twelve-inch main, and there was discussion on which way the mains went. And at that point, we had already asked the sewer department, and that was months ago, for information on either one of those mains, so that we could have our sewer consultant, Stan Tech, put together a design plan and demonstrate that we would be able to use one of those mains. We never got any response since that meeting. Peter Freeman, I think, sent a letter, Mr. Pucci, with, again, with the specific questions on what information we were looking for, and we got a response on that information yesterday. So, we took a, a look at it, and we still don't have the information that we asked for, or that we think we need. But I think it's obviously heading in that direction, you know.
So, you agree that we're heading in the right direction?
As far as sewer goes, yes.
Okay. You just need more time.
Well, we need more information, and once we have that, we need, we need more information to finalize a sewer design.
Would you fill me in on that? So, I mean, I've known all along that you need, you need to pump your sewer to the plant in Surfside. You need to directly pump it to Surfside. There is no other option, I don't think.
Oh, no, there is, there is another option, and then we actually discussed it at that meeting when we had those two options.
Now, what's the other option?
The other option is to tie into the twelve-inch main that's going to be taking the sewage from the new Montemoy pump station when it goes online. So, that's the information-
But doesn't the town feel if that's not a viable option right now?
Well, that's what we need to investigate. Our, our, our design option was to time the pump stations so that they don't operate simultaneously. If their concern is the amount of volume going through the line. Again, we don't know. We don't know what the line was designed for, and what their projected flows are in that line. Our other option would be, if it was a concern about peak periods operating at the same time, you know, we could, we could store the sewage on-site to operate off-peak areas. The cleaner solution that we talked about would be to put, where we tie into that twelve-inch line, would be to put a pressure gauge on that line, and the pressure gauge would, would tell our pumps when the other pumps are pumping through that pressure line. And so, our pumps would be delayed until the pressure goes down, and then our pumps could kick in.
That's a recipe for disaster.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, and you just-
It's not, Jeff, it's-
Keep it, keep it simple. The KISS theory should win out. Yes, go ahead, please.
It's another pointless conversation to be having, because this thing about, you know, I, I don't want to get into this type of thing, but to put out that, that they were waiting for information from the town is, is really just a bunch of baloney, okay? On January twenty-five, Weston and Sampson gave an analysis, and I produced that to the applicant's attorney. And, and that's the, that's consistent with Jeff's comments about what is a viable option for this site. The sewer department has, has made it very clear to them that what they're talking about is not a viable option, and they're going back and forth with information on it. It's, it's a productive dialogue to have, but at most, they're disagreeing that it's not a viable option. They're claiming that they need more information to, to determine that. But they've been provided from a, a technical consultant what the option is that's recommended for this site, and also what's, what's consistent with the town's planning that's gone into this. And so, you know, I, I've, I've talked about a lot about, you know, jurisdictional issues and, and trying things before HAC. One, one viable issue that, that is a viable issue for trial before HAC would be the town's pre-existing long-term planning commitments, and, and what they've done, and what they've spent on it, and what makes sense from a technical standpoint. And that information has been provided to the applicant. If they choose in the end that they don't want to go with that recommendation, then you're going to end up being the sewer commissioners, and you're going to impose conditions on the project that they can choose to litigate or- is a, a design recommendation, and, and the developer's, you know, free to, to continue to work with, with the consultants on that issue in the meantime, or not, or, or can agree to disagree, in which case, then you're gonna take the information that's provided to you from the town and from the town's consultants, and then you're gonna act as the local board sewer commissioners for the purpose of imposing conditions with regard to sewer.
I mean, can we go so far as to impose a condition that you have to install a gravity line to the pump, to the, from, from this development, which was a recommendation at one point?
Yeah, the requirement, your first prong of a requirement is that that condition be reasonable. And, and what you're suggesting is certainly reasonable based on the technical review of Weston and Sampson. If the, if the applicant turns around and says, that renders the project uneconomic, that's an example of, of an economics argument. They say, no, we can't do that, that costs us $7 million, and that renders our project uneconomic. And that's a legitimate position for them to take at that point, in which case you have to examine their pro forma and do that financial analysis that, that Ed had suggested with respect to that condition, but we're not there yet.
Okay, but again, that would come out in a normal give and take when we were in the conditioning stage?
That's right.
When arguably the, the here, sorry, but I don't know what's going on with the mics, but.
That's right, and that's why you'd want enough hearing time to be able to do that. You don't wanna close the hearing, because you wanna be able to have that dialogue.
Exactly. And again, I'm not trying to drag this on, and I, I frankly give the board a lot of credit that no one's gotten sick, no one's missed a meeting, et cetera, et cetera, it can't go on forever. Somebody's gonna go by the wayside. I'm not looking for that, but I'm just surprised that it, so we're interested in getting this done. Having said that, I, I sort of agree with, I do agree with George, Donna, I, I'm not sure that we need to talk about the sewer too much more tonight.
No, I'm not, I don't wanna talk about it either, and I see the, the next plan up there, I only brought it up because it was mentioned about the information. And to be clear, the Weston and Sampson report, you know, it's a recommendation that we don't tie into that line, and I think if we were provided with the technical information that backs up that recommendation, we give it to our consultant, and they tell us we agree with that recommendation, I just think we need to vet out, you know, not having the opportunity to tie into it, and I think.
Well, ultimately.
I think that's probably the bottom line. We've already, the original plan did show the forceman going all the way to the plant, and that was the original option that the consultant said they thought, you know, would be viable, so I think I'll, you know, I'll end it there until we get to the next phase.
Thank you. Did you wanna speak about general things, specific things?
I've, I've got a number of things to talk about, but I got a specific one I'd like to, to talk about, and I guess it's, it's going to, I'm sorry, Bruce Perry for the record, 14 South Street Road. I guess, and I've said this in some of the writings I've given to, to the board, my objection is that we're designing this project for the developer, it's up to the developer to propose a project to the board, you conditioned it and then disposed of it. I think for you to spend some time on a 92-unit plan that developers already said in writing they don't wanna do, I think wastes everybody's time. So that's one of the number of things, I'll save my rest for later.
Thank you. Having said, heard that, we still should go with the 92 plan.
Well, I, I think the applicant said they would go with this 92-unit plan.
Yeah, I do, too. I mean, they, they submitted it, and at one point, which is a, pretty much an admission that this plan would work. So there was no talk at the time that it was uneconomic. Now, we could still render it, I mean, there could be a condition that was, as George was describing, if we had a dialogue going with condition that, you made the case, we made it uneconomic, and we talked about it, and the condition might have been modified, but closing the hearing precludes us from doing any of that. So I think I'm comfortable moving forward with the 92 in terms of tweaking that and our comments on that. And then it's on the applicant to, unfortunately, there's a, a large body of material that is not available on the 92, and that was never made available to us. There were sketch plans on all of the condo buildings, duplex buildings, there weren't architectural plans, all right, they were closed. We never knew which units were affordable, which units were market, so that, and we can go through that. And I'm not interested in designing their project either, but, and really, it's not our job to list what is missing, but I'm, I'm more than willing to help, everyone else is.
It moves us forward.
All right. So, having said that, where do you wanna go? Does everybody up here wanna sort of talk about what we think would be feasible on this plan?
I think the biggest issue, right, is the condo buildings. And my take would be to remove.
I'm sorry, Jim, they can't hear you.
And replace them.
They can't hear you.
Four buildings.
Four buildings, yeah.
Can you see your way cutting them?
Those are eight-unit buildings each, correct?
No, yes.
Yeah.
I could see my way to, there's, there's, having four of these little, these four year old.
Yeah, I agree, I don't mean cutting them down a single family, but.
One, two, three, four, boom. See the duplexes, you have a nice street state? I think you can, I did some calculating, I think you can get the proper parking in there, in this, on the site, with the numbers we had used.
So convert all, all four of those eight-unit buildings to duplexes?
No, not duplexes, they're four-unit buildings.
It's basically cutting the building in half.
It's going with this module, this two-module building, versus the four-module building.
This one.
Yeah, I mean, again, we were very close, those buildings were relatively attractive. I mean, again, from a streetscape.
The scale of numbers.
The scale was, from a site design perspective, the scale was great, it looked good, it, I think you could create private outdoor spaces, I think it was comfortable, it was breathable, you weren't stuffing everybody into this little, you know, again, the whole basement thing is another issue, but I think these had basement bedrooms, they certainly did not have bedroom, I mean, whole units.
No, they had two bedrooms and, three bedrooms in the basement, but they were connected to units that also had upstairs bedrooms.
I mean.
They're definitely more appropriate in scale, like 27 feet tall.
Yeah.
Which is reasonable.
Yep. Just everything from a site planning perspective is better. There's more green space, there's less, there's less parking space, there's, again, the scale is more in keeping with what's going on, it's still, I think, I, by my math, it still comes out to 16 bedrooms an acre, which is more than rugged scot, which I think was 14, and Satchin's, I think, was nine, so from the site planning, I, I just think it's much better. What about the single-family homes? How many are on this plan? Does anybody know?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Forty-four? Yeah, I have 44.
I mean, I could see my way if we can get it to 40 or, I mean, not unfortunately, but you have to go in four-building increments to keep the 40, 40 built, 40B thing working.
Oh, with 25%.
So you can't reduce by one, two, or three, you have to reduce by four, or change by four, you could go up by four, too, but I don't think we're there, so. I mean, I could see my way to 36 or 40 if you can fit them in comfortably, and again, we talked about 60 feet of frontage, but that was an average thought, if there were, and I certainly would have been amenable if someone came in and said, well, you know, we tried our hardest to get 60, but we got 60 on most of them, but a few were 57, or, you know, again.
And I think because there was never parking shown on these, it was really hard to get a sense of how these buildings were gonna work together, so I think if you did a little bit more work to this plan, it would educate you on certain units, certain lots that might wanna get wider, others that could get narrower because of their shape, they could address the parking issue differently. I mean, you know, I was just hoping to see this plan a little bit more developed so that I could start to address some of the things that we had been asking for the last time we met. So I don't have a, a strong and fast rule in terms of the number of single-family homes, but I think certainly a reduction of 10% would be nice, down to 40, and if they do 36, you know, obviously that's better, but.
You know, quite frankly, I have to believe the unit, the buildings would be worth more if there was breathing room.
More space.
If I wasn't.
Hey, you want a cup of sugar?
Yeah, I, I just think that, I think it would be better for the developer, I really do. I think you're gonna be hard-pressed when there are so many people there to, but anyway, that's your business, not mine.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't you be able to then provide on some of them, like you were on other developments' garages on the same lots, and make it a little bit more?
Yeah, you might have some more, more opportunity for some other amenities, like the spas that you talked about, there're not gonna be any spas on these lots, the tiny lots. We'll just, you know, that, that would be a condition. I don't, you know, I, I just think it's, it, the, the fact that you'd like to overburden the site, it just doesn't, it just doesn't make sense to me. Anyway, but how do we feel about the duplexes as a part of the plan?
I like them.
I like them.
I don't have a problem with them. They were full-market units, I don't know what, what you would plug in, the three-bedroom for-sale number, but did you have a, a number in mind on that?
I'm sorry, I was asking, Donna, about the square footage of these lots, I think, by the way, they're all 5,000 square feet, and, you know, there's plenty of examples in Peach Plum Village with similar-sized houses and spas, but, so, I missed the question, would you, would you repeat it, please?
The cost of the duplexes, what you were thinking of selling the duplexes for?
So, you know, somewhere around a million and a quarter, a million and a half.
Yeah, each.
Yeah.
Each side.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I, I just think you, you, you can make money, fulfill the 40B requirement, supply some year-round housing, and have a project that you can be proud of, and point it something that everybody thinks, hey, this is a reasonable project, this is a good project, and maybe there'd be the possibility of community support, but at the 100 units, with the 100-foot-long buildings, and I don't think you can have much support. I just, I, it, it sort of boggles my mind, but, and I, I don't, I'd like to see the argument that it's not economic, and maybe we'll get there. So, what about, so we're, does everybody?
So where are we at? We're, we're talking about possibly 40 rather than 44 single families, and how many of those condominiums? Those bigger condominiums?
We're talking about six four-unit buildings.
No, eight four-unit buildings.
Eight four-unit buildings.
One, two, three, four.
So that's 32, so we'd be at 32 plus eight duplexes, that's 40, plus 40, that's 80 units.
Yeah, it's 80 units.
And the green space in the center, we were talking about that section being more playground, things like that, I believe, they had a basketball court or something shown.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we were talking about being able to revive some.
I would prefer to see more green space, rain garden, that type of thing, instead of a basketball or sport.
Or playground for kids.
Kids don't use sport courts anymore, do they?
No.
I think you use that, you use that space to treat, to treat runoff.
Yeah, I just, I generally just think underburdening the site instead of overburdening it, is just a much better site planning, design objective.
So I think what we would need to see would be a new plan, we'd have to mark out which are the affordable, single-family houses, we'd need to show the parking, spas if any, because they're also show sheds at the moment, at least from a slight plan perspective, then we would have a plan that we could vote on.
What about the parking issue? And we talked about it pretty clearly at the last meeting, and I thought we were clear about, and I, I think they probably can, can meet the parking requirement, I thought we said, I thought we said two per house, plus .75.
For each of the bedrooms?
Bedrooms.
In the other.
Not, not plot, because.
No, 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 for those buildings, though, they'd have to provide, yeah, the condos.
The condos were .75?
Yeah.
And one, one per bedroom on the duplexes, you had to provide three. I was thinking about it today, I mean, the other thing you have to provide for at some point is some, some area where, well, I guess you're, you were planning to do in-house landscaping, I was thinking of the landscape crews coming in, they have to park somewhere, but maybe that's not an issue, but I think you can meet our, our, the parking, I think there's enough room, with the reduction in units.
There was, I thought we had one issue with that road that fronts, there's a group of five houses there, the road.
Here?
Yeah, there was a parking issue with those houses, because they're, they're really up.
There's no parking shown.
I mean, arguably, you could fit two parks.
No, I'm talking about this road.
Yeah, the idea, I think, what we were thinking was six becomes five.
Yeah, that's where that would be reduced.
Obviously, they can shift this building back and get the spaces up front.
Well, they were doing tandem on all of them.
None of these, they're not doing tandem here, you can't fit any parking right here, the way it's laid out, I'm not saying it's the end-all deal, but.
It needed some work, but. I think you can have a mixture of tandem and side-by-side.
I think it should be a mixture, the original plan, the 100-unit plan shows them all as tandem.
Yeah, I think the tandem units will come in over time and ask for relief so that they can be side-by-side, because nobody likes to park tandem, but.
And I just think it helps with the streetscape, to give the streetscape a little bit more interest.
Right. And, and, you know, obviously, if it's side-by-side, it takes one of the street spaces away.
Well, they don't have any street spaces on those streets?
No, not on that one, on some of the other, it's a good point.
And then there was some discussion about one of the, about one of these streets becoming a two-way street.
Yeah.
Last time we met.
Yeah, I think it was this one?
Where somebody wanted to go get a beer, and then one wanted to go left.
I was shot, I wanted to get a beer, I don't remember that.
But right now, it's all one-way, correct?
I think that makes sense. I have one that's two-way.
Maybe the one with the additional parking by the rec building?
Yeah.
So that you can go.
Get your mail.
Do a loop and not have to go, yeah.
And then you're not making a street there.
Because right now, to, to get your mail, if you lived, like, here, well, hopefully you would walk, but you'd have to go all the way around, you wouldn't be able to come down, or you'd be able to come down this way. I don't know, it wasn't clear which was one-way and two-way, and I think we need to clarify it.
I don't know why this would be helpful if it's two-way, because this is one-way, so let's say you were here, well, I can go two ways, I can go that way.
I think we also wanted input from public safety, fire marshal.
Fire marshals, yeah, because we didn't have any of that stuff on this plan.
We asked for that last meeting.
But there was some, there was some feedback, but that was not on this plan, right? The feedback that we got was for the other plan, so.
Yeah.
It's irrelevant.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think we're talking arbitrary numbers here, it's not just a number thing, it just, this, I think what we just, just described is what fits comfortably and allows for adequate frontage, landscaping, parking, green space, traffic issues, access to the units, so you're not altogether, private outdoor space, storage facilities, no entire units in the basements, again, I, I just think it's, it's a much better site, plan, much safer, much better for the health and safety of the occupants. So, having said that, I, I don't, I, all we can do is ask the applicant to provide us more information on this plan?
You can, and then, see what they say, and then get into the waivers of the applicant.
Much safer, much better for the health and safety of the occupants. So, um, having said that, I, I don't, I don't, all we can do is ask the applicant to provide us more information on this plan?
You can, and then, see what they say, and then get into the waivers that they have.
Okay, so, we're, I, I think we're asking.
So, uh, we're not going to make further visions to this plan if it, if it means changing the program and reducing the program at this point. If you guys said, "We like this program, we'll go with this program, we want to see all of the driveways and things like that," then I think that would be a different conversation, but...
Well, it, it would be helpful to see a plan that shows all the information, because at this point, we can't make any determination. It looks like the driveways don't fit.
If you guys, if you guys were saying, "We like this program and we'll get behind this program," then, you know...
I don't think we're saying that.
Nobody's saying that.
There's a reason to do it.
Yeah.
But, I, I don't, I don't think we're going to say that, are we? That we like this program?
Oh, no.
No, nothing like that.
Now, having said that, if you provided a plan that had all the information and made your case that this is a great plan, that it, it, uh...
Which is the responsibility of the applicant to begin with.
It is. Uh, and, but we would still obviously reserve our right to condition it, and the conditioning may be that we don't want to see all these big buildings still. So, just be, you know, I'm not going to sit here and say that we love this plan. I don't think anyone would say that.
I, I think it'd be irresponsible for us to accept a plan like carte blanche without having all the information.
Information on it.
There's no way we can say, we can't get, tell you what you want to hear, because we don't, we don't have all the information.
I, I do think we can get behind this plan, the concept of this plan.
But I can't sign off on it and say, yes, this is, I'm going to be okay with this, without having all the information.
Right.
We are definitely behind the idea of this plan. I can say that, right?
Yeah, and I think that's where we were the last meeting.
But nobody's saying we're behind the notion of a 92-unit plan.
No, we're behind the idea of this plan.
Okay, sure.
There are some specifics that still need to be worked out.
Sure.
And for us to be happy.
I mean, I personally don't need the 60-foot frontage. As long as you can fit a unit on a small lot, you can fit a unit on a lot. I don't need 60 feet. I don't, you know, I don't think you necessarily need that.
But I think you have to show the parking on the lot in relation to the buildings, to see how the...
And the setbacks.
You can show a unit with some setbacks and two parking spaces on a unit, I don't necessarily think it needs 60 feet.
Can you, can you quick, go back to the 100-unit, um, plan that we saw, saw at the beginning?
Sure.
Can I just, can I just piggyback on Jeff's comment for a second?
Sure.
Just the, what you just said about the 60-foot frontage versus 50-foot, I think that was one of the, those things that if, if that was able to happen, maybe even on a couple of lots, that would have been great, but to come back and say, 50 feet is, you know, in all of these zoning districts, and this is what we want to do, like, okay, I could, I can get behind that, that's fine, but that didn't happen.
Well, I was just going to show on the, on this, on, on this...
Yeah. Back. No, no, one more, this way.
Yeah.
Well, even this, this, I don't, some, I thought these plans had dimensions, and this one doesn't, period, but this, to me, is breathable. You're, you're, this is a five-foot setback, no one can see this, I can barely see it. This is probably a 10-foot setback, which is what we talked about. This lot's much more than 50. It's only 5,000 square feet, but that's what we're talking about. This, to me, has some, now, I don't love these right next to the rec building, but who cares?
But you're just talking about how the lots play out and the parking.
And how it relates to the housing designs that you have.
Right.
As opposed to the current 92-unit plan where the houses are all...
Yeah.
On top of each other.
Not, not the four or five extra feet, it makes a huge difference, but it definitely makes a difference.
So I thought...
Yeah.
Well, I think that's the kind of development we're looking for on this plan.
Yeah.
To see development in terms of the amount of information.
I mean, I think you're stuck, you know, some, some might say that we're stuck on the numbers, and I'm going to say that you're, obviously, you're stuck on the number. For obvious reasons, but I still think that this project will be more than economic. Well, did they?
And I think be a better product for the island.
I think it'd be a better product from the, for the island. I think it'd be a better product for the people who are living there. I think it would be a better product for the developer, because I think you're going to have more...
Better response.
A better response to it, yeah. So, again, we're, we're, this is how we'd like to proceed, we're... So is, what is the final, I, it doesn't have to be final, what, what is the thought?
Well, what I'm hearing is reduce the cottages, uh, reduce, you know, 80 units versus 92. I mean, I think, in that scenario, we should just close the hearing. It just, honestly, it doesn't...
Okay, well, we're going to vote on this one anyway, then, ultimately.
So we still need more information.
And, and certainly, we could look at the notion, I'm not advocating this, of, of a straight-up denial based on a lack of information. Because there's clearly not enough information, or, or not sufficient information, for us to make an informed decision, but we would do our best. Go ahead, Ed.
If I could make a suggestion, I think the only orderly process would be to ask again the applicant to provide more details on this site plan.
Right.
We may not reach agreement on 80 versus 92. If that's the case, at least you can write an informed decision based upon that plan. It'll be much easier to craft the conditions. And then we can have the, uh, debate about whether or not those conditions make the project uneconomic at the HAC.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think there's any way to vote on this plan, because we don't have enough information.
Yeah.
And does it make, I mean...
But, right, but it's a right decent decision.
Right, the only alternative would be to deny it completely.
Better for the applicant, it's better for you.
Yeah, again, I, as Ed just said, I think a, a well-thought-out decision is better for everybody, not just us.
We think you should, um, act on the 100-unit plan, which you have adequate information on, and which is really our current proposal.
I, I, it, it, it boggles the mind.
I don't feel like I have adequate information on that, though.
On the 100?
Yeah.
No, of course they don't. We don't know which units are...
Affordable, we don't have that plan. This set only had, it, it was missing half the site plan for certain pieces of paper. So I don't, we don't have a full set of drawings. We don't have the drawings of the large structures we submitted.
I think you, you should have all the site plans. They've broken up, there's two sheets that show a full site plan.
Right. It says, but there's, the affordable units are not marked.
Yeah, the affordable units are not marked on that set, but they were marked on the previous set, so...
And then there's no second, let's see, how about the, um, sheet four? Layout plan multi-family parcel, where's the layout plan for the, uh, single families?
I'm sorry, say that again.
This layout plan for the single families.
The outlines are the same as the October 25th set.
But these say type A, type B, and then there's nothing second plan that shows the rest of the development as type buildings.
Okay, so...
That's missing.
Those, those are all shown on the October 25th set, and they, they would have to be added to that.
Well, but you have to understand, I mean, we have so many drawings. It would have been really helpful, if you want us to vote on something, to give us a complete set of information, so we had in front of us tonight.
Yeah, not only did we not get a complete set on what, we didn't even know what we were supposed to vote on, 156, 100, you know, we never, it wasn't clear to me. I, I, I thought we were voting on the 156, and I looked in the pack and it's all about the 100, so it, it, it doesn't, it's, it's just a disservice to the board to just give us a bunch of stuff that is unrelated. I mean, if you want us to, if you wanted us to, which I don't think is the right path to go down, if you absolutely wanted us to, uh, vote on the 100-unit, um, submission tonight, that whole, everything, every bit of information should have been there. It still isn't there. Still, to this day, we don't know what the rec building looks like in the 100-unit, uh, we don't, we don't know where the, and I'm going to miss 100 things. We don't know where the market versus the affordables are. We don't know, I'm, I'm not even sure what the design is on the, that sounds very...
Can I just, can I just interrupt for one second?
Go ahead.
In the memo, we did lay out that these were, so this, our memo refers back to Freeman's memo from the March 11th hearing. And in that memo, he included an index that listed everything that's been submitted, and he broke it down, and there were a few items that were still to be submitted. And these are those items, so this is a supplement to the 100-unit plan that was proposed back on October 3rd. This wasn't meant to be a submission, a complete submission.
But...
Well, you asked us to close the hearing, and how can we close the hearing? We don't, we don't have all the information. You just said we don't have all the information.
You do have all the information.
Where, where are the affordable units versus the, uh, market rate units in the condos? Do you have a plan that shows me that?
It's been submitted in, in past hearings, and we can work on pulling that up.
I never saw that, never.
Okay, we did submit it.
All I'm saying is, even if it was, I don't know, I just feel like to expect us to be able to find all that information and bring it to a meeting, rather than submit it so it was clear to everybody sitting up here what we were actually trying to vote on, would have been appreciated and helpful, because I don't, I can go to my car and bring out the stack of paper this big and dig through it myself, but that's really, um, sort of, not, you know, it's basically saying, I don't, we don't appreciate the time you're putting into this, we're going to make you search for all this information.
Okay, that certainly wasn't the intention. Uh, we, we were trying to complete the file by, by supplementing it with some items that we thought were still required in order for there to be a, a final review of that plan. If you want us to resubmit something all packaged up like that for your benefit, that's, you know...
We, we would, and it, it should start with the 92-unit plan. That's what we want you to do.
That, that's not going to have the complete list of submissions, as, as we suggest we have, have submitted for the 100.
I think that's what we were hoping to get to last week, though.
Yeah.
Was a plan, because we were, you know, I mean, there were, as we said, we brought up some other items that we wanted to see, but I think what we were trying to get at last week was, even if you come back to us, there was a lot of information on that 92-unit plan. Even we loved it the way it was, you had a lot of information to get to us, and that's what we were hoping to start seeing this week.
And, and if you guys said, "We like that plan and we agree to that program," would you please, you know, can we, can we see more?
We can't say that without seeing all, everything laid out.
Well, we talked about that the last meeting. I think there was an acknowledgement that the process starts with a concept and a program, and...
Conceptually, I think we all like the plan, conceptually.
Right, well, we established that at the work group, which is why we continued to develop it. We broke down exactly how many types of units. So we did spend some time on further developing the plans that, but from a program standpoint, I mean, if you guys, if, if you guys are opposed to the 92-unit version, I don't think there's a lot of rationale behind further developing it.
Go ahead, Ed.
We're, we're really moving backwards. If you need to write a decision on that 100-unit plan, the weaknesses of the 100-unit plan have been pointed out, they've been discussed at the work session. This might not be ideal, but if time is important to all of us, including the applicant, it is going to save time to do, provide the additional information that's necessary on the 92-unit plan, even if you can't find a way to reduce the number of units, have the board draft a decision, and then fight it out at the HAC. To argue that they should be making a decision on that 100-unit plan is, it just doesn't make sense. And it's time to sort of close the hearing, once you get that information, have your deliberation sessions, write a decision, and then take the next step, whatever is necessary. There's not that, I don't think there's, well, I shouldn't say that. In terms of showing you where the parking spaces are, I can't believe that's a big deal.
I wouldn't...
I can't speak about the engineering or how much engineering is needed in terms of that, but for the information you're looking for, I think that could be done by April 4th.
I, I have a question of, of, of Don. Uh, this plan has been floating around for a while, and actually, you probably did it. In some fashion. So, is the, has the engineering been started on this?
Uh, no, it hasn't. Um, actually, Chris Dolvis did it in his office. I mean, we've looked at it. Like all the other plans, we've taken the concepts and then converted them into engineering plans, like you've seen. We haven't done that for this layout.
Okay, but, okay, I, I hear you. In your opinion, and I know it's just an opinion at this point, are you going to be able to fulfill the require, the engineering requirements of this plan, with this plan in mind? You know, the 95% recharge, and the this, and the that?
I, I believe definitely, you know, from the drainage point of view, uh, we can, we can handle that. The geometry of the roadways and the entrances, we would have to do an analysis for the fire truck to make sure, so there would probably be some tweaking, you know, for that on some of those, some of those corners that I see, so...
It looks like it.
But, um, no, we could, we could take that and convert it to an engineering plan with, obviously, with the tweaks that we would, you know, that would be necessary for those issues.
Thank you. Colin, do you want to speak about what?
Just, just in response to that, uh, because there's so much other stuff I'd like to speak on, but...
Yeah, don't.
I'm not going to go there right now. Maybe I will at some point.
I don't think so.
But in terms of timing, in terms of timing, um, as you know, that one of the land council's, um, uh, areas of focus is, is water quality, and we did hire peer review, um, which we received no response from the applicant on, our report that we submitted in December. If he's then, if the applicant's then going to make a stormwater design based on this plan, and we're going to come in on April 4th and close the hearing, you're not, you're doing a complete, not you, but the process is a complete disservice to the public and to the land council that we can't even comment on that plan. I know the situation you're in, but...
We recognize the disservice is being done, but thank you.
Just to be clear, so the conversation doesn't continue on that track, you know, by that date, the only thing that we would be able to do is the geometry and the layout and take this plan. We wouldn't be able to do the drainage calyx and the plumbing profiles and all that stuff around a lot of time.
That's why we were asking for an extension last time.
That's, that's why we thought last time, um, we were moving towards that, so maybe that would be ready for this meeting. We would continue the tweakage and the talking and the discussion, and ideally, there'd be another extension. So I, as I said, I thought we were getting relatively close on the site plan. So, all we can do is ask. Are you still saying no?
You know, what we've said is, in, in each one of these instances, is that we're coming back with, this is, this is the best that we think we can do viably for this design or for that design, and so when it came to bringing the parking to the inside, when it came to, you know, changing the plan, plan completely to this version, so again, I mean, if there was a consensus about the program, I think, you know, that would be the basis on which we could say, all right, well, let's talk about further developing it, but I think if there's not, I don't.
I think, I think, I think we, we've said we like this, the, the idea of this plan. We, we may have some differences of opinion on some specifics, but...
Yeah, I just, I don't understand what changed, and I don't want to backslide, but I don't understand what changed between last meeting, where we, I, I think we all felt we were moving forward, to then come here with this, back to the 100-plan, like, I, I wish we'd had, like, at the close of that meetings, that be said, that, that, that this wasn't going to move forward at this, at the 92, because, you know, what Don's saying about not, you know, he won't have time to get the full mechanicals and, uh, engineering plans, you know, I just feel like we waste, it's such a, we have such limited time anyways, it's such a waste of everybody's time, now that we're trying to now recreate what we agreed, what we suggested last week to now be done in an even shorter amount of time, and we're not, we're, again, we're not going to get the information we need, or give the public the comment time they need to review a thoughtful plan. It's frustrating.
It's very frustrating.
Well, it has been a year. I wouldn't say, you know, chalk it up to a waste of time, I mean, all right. At the last meeting, we did indicate that we may, we were going to analyze some of your thoughts and that there may or may not be a follow-up plan.
Well, we, I sort of made the assumption that if you didn't think our, all of our thoughts were warranted, that you'd come back when they developed this plan.
Right.
Not a, we're going back to the original 140... Not a, we're going back to the original 149 or the 100 plan.
Right, or like some alternate, alternative, like, we can't, you know, this thing that you wanted, we can't meet, but we could do this, or, you know, something...
Because that makes the whole January through now a waste of time totally.
Yeah.
Which we understood going in, I mean, back before we started the workshop. I think we had a candid conversation that we will give it our best effort, and we may get there, we may not get there.
But you were comfortable with this plan, or you wouldn't have submitted it?
As it is. I mean, it's programmatically, it's, there's obviously a business side to it as well, and so we, you know, as we've talked about trying to fit the various pieces together, I mean, Chairman Tool pointed out in the other plan that he brought up the 100-unit plan, how there's more space on each one of the cottage properties, but there was a lot more condos on that plan, there's less cottages. And so again, you know, this is the least amount of condo units of any of the plans that we've submitted, a 40. And so in order to make that work, we had to add cottages, and we talked about that at the last meeting.
Well, you added, you also added the eight duplex units at 1.25 million each, so...
Right, which is...
That's two five per building, so...
Right, so if you go back, if you go back to the 88-unit version, it's, it was 40 condos, 48 cottages, which essentially what's happening here, except...
Essentially, but not quite.
Right.
It's a few more. It's more than 88.
Yeah, it's a few more units, but if those particular, it's not more lots. I mean, the duplex lots, if those were single-family, it would, it would be a similar plan to the 88 unit. But...
Well, George and Ed, if the applicant just, you know, is intractable in their position, I assume we can craft some sort of comprehensive permit decision based on what we have. No, yes, maybe?
Not, not really. I would then go to the 100-unit plan and identify what information you probably need on that plan, and start going through the waiver requests. It's an unfortunate situation. I don't, I don't...
I don't understand, I really don't understand Jamie's argument about not providing further information on the 92-unit plan. I understand maybe where you're coming from, that you're saying, "This is it for us, 90, we can, this is the bottom that we can do, 92 units," but you're not presenting, while you're saying that, you're not giving them a plan that they can vote on. Even if you don't, if you don't complete your engineering on it, even you don't know if this is your bottom-line plan. You may, you may come up with design issues that you're like, "Oh, gosh, we can only do 88," you, I don't know. But why not? You had, you know, you have people reasonably on board with this site plan, why not at least flesh it out and see what the plan shows so the board can act on it? If, if you end up that you are able to design it, that you can do 92 units there, and all the engineering works, and your setbacks, and your parking, and all the rest of it fit, then you can come back to them and you can say, "Look, 92 is our bottom line, and here is the site plan that will support it." And then they can vote on it. I just don't, so that would be my first question, you know, why not just do that at least? And then, and then the second point is a really unfortunate fallback, and it goes to not designing their project for them. If you want to insist that you will only go forward with a plan with sufficient detail, the 100-unit plan, then let's just start working on that plan, and do our best with the time that we have left to identify the issues that you need to act on that 100-unit plan, and go through the waivers that are required for the 100-unit plan. I think it's really unfortunate with what's gone on to do it that way, but that would, if, if that's all you're leaving the board with, then let's just do that.
All right, Ed, did you want to speak to this?
I don't want to be repetitive. However, I will say it again.
Go ahead, let's make the point.
The only alternative here that makes any sense, based upon my experience, is to present the 92-unit plan with the information accompanied by the waivers that would be necessary for that plan. That's going to save everybody a lot of time.
Now, when you say, "Save time," are you talking in the next steps?
In the, in the future. I mean, if this ends up, it's going to allow you to draft a decision more easily, and if we do, after this, still end up at the HAC, and remember, the applicant appeals to the HAC. If the applicant is denied, or feels that any of the conditions make it uneconomic, at least we'll have a good base to begin with. And then the applicant can make those arguments at the HAC. But you don't have to draft a decision based upon a plan you really don't like, for good reason. At least you like the sort of basic structure of this plan. I don't know why the applicant wouldn't agree to do that.
I don't either.
And are you saying, taking this plan and literally marking it up, and that's the plan we go by?
No, no, no.
No, no, no. Take the plan and have Don provide the information you need.
Right.
In terms of the parking spaces and those proposed spars or whatever, you should tell him that right now, what do you expect to see, and what enhancements you need to this plan.
But I thought we did that, and he said no. I mean, I thought, I thought we did that last time.
We're asking again.
You did, no, no, no.
I thought he just said no.
We're talking about the level of information. We're not talking about the dimensional requirements. Take this plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Parking spaces.
And have him provide the additional information in terms of parking spaces. I'm not talking about changing any of the dimensions. We're not trying to sort of shrink this plan. You'd like to, but not.
We just want more information on this plan beside that.
I'm just saying, let's do a decision on this plan.
Even though we know...
Even though you might say 92 units is too many.
Right, but we need the information to craft a plan.
But we're still, each of us are in a better position for having that plan be the reference plan in the comprehensive permit decision.
Because the only other thing you could do is deny this, because no information...
Right, yeah, no, that's what I'm, that's what I was going to say, what do we do if there is no information?
Wouldn't HAC require, or a basis for why we denied it? I mean, besides saying that we just denied it?
There's a big distinction, and I'll let George explain it, between denying a comprehensive permit and granting a comprehensive permit with conditions. George can explain the, sort of the difference in terms of the position you're in at the HAC under those two alternatives. So you would approve, you, you might likely approve this plan with conditions that might say, "We think the eight-unit buildings are too large, they should be four-unit buildings." And then instead of arguing with you now here, the applicant can make its case at the HAC, and they might win that case. But we're, we're moving forward, we're not moving backwards.
That's what I would like to do, is move forward. I think we all would like to move forward. Do you want to...
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, it's essentially the same thing that I'm saying. You only have a couple of, because this follows up in your question, Jim, about, well, do you suggest we just start marking up this 92-unit plan? And no, he's saying not that. You have two options, is if the develop, if the applicant agrees to provide this plan with sufficient information and detail in the engineering for you to act on this plan.
And waivers.
And to act on the waivers that would be required for this plan at 92 units. If they provide that, then you would go forward on that. If they refuse to provide that sufficient information, your other option is to go forward on the 100-unit plan, identify what's in the record, what isn't, what additional information you require, and what waivers would be necessary to approve that 100-unit plan, and then you act on that plan, because that's the way that they're structuring it for you. One, one thing, and, you know, many people may disagree with me, but in, in my experience with HAC, I'm saying, and in the 40B process, denials for lack of sufficient information are not a great thing to have, because then the HAC in effect ends up your permitting authority. Because they'll just, they'll provide the information to HAC, at that time, HAC acts on it, they give them basically everything that they want, and then that's what you're doing.
We're not, we're not looking to go there.
Yeah, so, so that's not, you know, again, in my opinion, and I know people, reasonable minds can disagree, because I, you know, I hear a lot of just acting, you know, denying for lack of information. In my opinion, it's not the, not a good way to go. What, if you're left with this unfortunate situation with, that they're putting you in, that they refuse to further tweak the 92-unit plan, then I would recommend you go ahead with the 100-unit plan, identify what's missing, and then act on that plan.
I'm not even asking for, recommending a tweak.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just asking to provide the additional information that you've mentioned.
Which we asked for last time, and unfortunately, and then, and thought we were going that route. We thought we would get that plan, show the parking, the this, the that, and we'd have a discussion about it. Instead, we get the memo, vote on the 156 or maybe the 100, so it's very frustrating.
So we've said this before, but this is not our favorite plan that we presented to you all. You know, this was, we've pursued this plan as a, as a good faith effort to get to some common ground. Our plan that we much prefer is the 100-unit plan, and for us, that's got the maximum amount of middle-income housing, 70% year-round units on that plan. This one, and we've talked about this before, but as you reduce the density, you have to bring up the number of cottages, down the number of condos. We get to 56.5% year-round housing, which is moving away from our, you know, target and our hope as far as maximizing the year-round peace. And so, you know, if this is a step toward reducing it beyond what we think is viable, why are we doing it? So that's why, I mean, that's why we're saying, I'm saying, if there's a consensus here that this 92-unit plan is something that you can get behind, then I think it's worth talking about a specific list that you guys would want to see so you could vote on. But I, I think if that's not, there's not consensus for that, then I think it's, I don't think it's worthwhile.
I do think there's consensus. We would like to see the plan. We would like to see how the 92 really works. Does the parking really work on some of these lots, or do you, can you not fit a car on some of them? If it all works, and you come back and says, you say, say, not says, it all works, maybe we would get behind it. How can we get behind it when we don't have the information? It's pretty hard for us. And again, I just think it's disrespectful. We're supposed, you're asking us to get behind something which we don't even know we're getting behind. So all we're doing is asking for a reasonable level of information on the 92-unit plan. We're not asking, as Ed said, for you to...
Let's, should we talk, should we talk about the list of what it is that you would want to see in order to get this to where you feel good voting on it?
I mean, I can give you what I think you need. I mean, again, we, you need architectural plans, they're stamped and signed, including elevations for all the buildings, which again, is a whole nother can of worms, because we haven't even done this sort of the quasi-HDC thing yet. We did it sort of on the houses. We've never seen an architectural plan of these buildings, other than sketches, which, which were nice. They look good, by the way. Anybody else can jump in here if I'm missing something. Information explaining the exterior building materials, you know, that, that level of detail needs to be provided. The unit square footage, you might have that already, should be shown for all the homes and units, building types.
Affordable.
Park, yeah, parking, floor plans should include a unit number for each condo so that the initial proposed affordable units can easily be identified and reviewed by the board and the subsidizing agency ultimately. For instance, we don't know if you're putting all the affordable units into, all, you know, mostly basement, which is never going to fly. I'm not saying you are, but we don't know that, because we don't have the information on, frankly, any of the plans. We don't have that info. The floor plans should conclude room dimensions. The applicant obviously would need to confirm that the building designs satisfy building code egress light ventilation requirements. Applicants should confirm which buildings will have sprinkler systems, which don't. Tables showing the allocation of the affordable units for each condo, cottage type should be provided.
We need a landscape plan.
Yeah, we need a landscape plan. The table should show the percentage of total habitable net square foot footage so that we can make sure that there's a prorata thing going on with the square footage, it's not skewed. Now, having said it, if you came back and said, "Yeah, we had to tweak this number," so it's not, all you're saying, something like the prorata thing isn't necessarily a hard, fast rule. It's where we want to start. We want some explanation why maybe you can't get there, if you can't. You've said repeatedly you can, so I think you probably can. The engineering plans, we already talked about, with the sewer water, drainage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And none of these are over and above what's been required from any other 40B. These are just standard, you know, I don't, I don't want the audience or anyone to think that we're, we're not piling this on you. This is just standard stuff that we need to see to be able to make an informed decision.
So I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage today without my 40B specialist as far as, you know, our attorney, but it's my understanding that to ask for stamped architectural plans is more than you need.
I'd have to, you know, again, if they're not stamped, but they're architectural plans that are dimensioned, that we can look at, and we can say, "Oh, no, we want you to..."
We need to see more than sketches for the big buildings, obviously.
Do they need to be stamped?
But if they're...
They do?
For the final decision, they need to be stamped.
Correct. I'm not talking about the comprehensive, you know, batting at the end.
But you have to produce those anyway for us to issue a comprehensive permit.
I'm trying to think of, um... Stajum's path, or Abrams Quarry, didn't they go, wait, which is the last one we did, I can't...
Stajum's path.
They went to the HTC themselves, so we didn't, never saw architectural plans for the buildings.
Right, but they were, they were there. We saw them after the HTC.
Right, they didn't go through us.
They didn't go through us. I don't remember them being stamped.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Our own comprehensive permit rules and regulations is amended about a year ago.
Mm-hmm.
Filed with the town clerk and on the town website, include a preliminary scaled architectural drawings. For each building, the drawings shall be signed by a registered architect and shall include typical floor plans, typical elevations and sections, and shall identify construction to make an exterior finish. That's one of many requirements.
Okay.
So is that what we're talking about when you say stamped?
Yeah, I mean, I assume Chris is doing it, and he's willing to stamp it. I mean, I...
All right, I'm sorry. As a builder, you know, when I think of stamped plans, I'm thinking about, you know...
I'm not talking about construction drawings.
Much more developed than...
In some of our plans, very often, architects and engineers will add "not for construction."
Yeah, they're not...
Because they know they're going to get tuned out when you apply for a building permit.
Yeah, we're not looking for construction drawings. We're not trying to overburden you with giving us more paper. It's just, we need to know what the heck we're looking at. Again, we talked about, and I'm sure Don has done this maybe on the 100-unit plan, but, and so hopefully it wouldn't be that difficult on this plan. There should be an understandable narrative explaining, or narrative explanation along with graphics that clarify the grades and access for proposed patios, et cetera, in those areas. The HTC, we talked about, we need to do some HTC-type of review. The landscaping plan, they, they, in their defense, they have, they have given us a typical landscape plan for a house, a cottage unit.
Yeah, we got one a while ago.
Right, which we...
Would it be nice to have, like, a sec, for the whole, like, what, are there going to be trees around the...
Yeah.
Loop and...
Yeah, shade trees and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
The size of those.
I think an updated landscaping plan, incorporating your typical cottage lot, typical condominium building, typical duplex, and then the...
And a master plan of the road and...
Then the master landscaping plan would be nice, certainly. We need more details on the proposed landscaping for the buffer area, if there is going to be landscaping, other than keeping it natural. I don't know how we felt about that. Were we, were we asking to beef it up, or...
Well, it should be, you talked about not, yeah, not clearing it, undisturbed, leaving it undisturbed, you know?
Again, and that, that might be all that the plan says, that this area is undisturbed. I'm not saying you have to plant a tree every two feet. It's just we need to know what, what your intention is.
Right.
So we can put, attach that ultimately to the comprehensive permit. So this, this, this information would be necessary, no matter what. The storage sheds, I do think we... The storage sheds, I do think we saw some preliminary, um, elevations on those.
92.
Uh, are there, is there any sort of reasonable accommodation for, um, well, are any of the affordable units... Handicapped, I guess would be the easy way to put it. Is that a requirement?
Accessible.
Handicap requirements vary based upon tenure. For ownership housing, my understanding, and I, I'm not a specialist in this, is that there is no requirements for handicap access. The state says, under the LIP program, that if a household with special needs is selected in the lottery, the initial lottery, the applicant has to make reasonable accommodation. And on projects I've worked on, we've had to do that.
Now, I'm just...
I try to figure out, you try to figure out how you can do that. There are a number of ways you can satisfy the handicap requirements. But clearly, if someone gets elected in the lottery, it becomes the applicant's responsibility to provide those at his expense.
But that, none of, none of that is local, right? This, all the handicap regulations are federal and state. Oh, we do have a local?
Well, we have a local board that...
But I think the regulation is...
Yeah, but it's, the ADA, American with Disabilities Act.
Yes, so your permit will ultimately be conditioned on compliance with, with our regulations.
Whatever the regulations are.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to get into that in great detail. It's just simply that something wants, that wants to be on a plan. This house can have a ramp and blah, blah, blah. It's not, I don't think it's a heavy burden they were trying to place. The other, another important one is outline building specifications should be submitted and explain any difference in equipments and equipment and finishes, including but not limited to HVAC equipment, appliances, flooring, cabinets, countertops, exterior materials, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, between the market and affordable cottages and the market and affordable condominium units. Again, it might be your intention that there is no difference in these units, but we don't know that yet. And that, that, yeah, no matter how many units are in the plan. The recreation building, we've seen one plan that was pretty much soundly, um, I can't think of the right word, but rejected. Rejected is a good word. So, we need updated drawings on that. The governance documents, we, I don't think we've ever seen anything about the homeowners association documents. You know, you should get into explaining how the cost for common areas are allocated.
And then, don't we talk about 2A, um, don't they have to have, what's it called, like an emergency fund? Oh, sorry. Right, is that part of it that they have to provide us with?
Yeah, I mean, there's going to, there should be some sort of, um...
Whatever that word is.
Sinking fund or, or, go ahead, Ed.
What makes this project interesting is you have a homeowners association, you have a condominium association. So, the governance issue is really how do you allocate costs between those two entities? And that's important because when you calculate the maximum allowable sales price for the affordable units, you have to factor in that number.
Oh, the allocation number?
The fees, what are the fees are.
Okay.
And again, as Susan had said, you ask this of all your applicants. On the 40Bs I've worked with, you know...
Yeah.
Not only do we ask everybody, but we've asked for this, in this applicant, on this application. 100, 156, or 92, or 88, or 80. It, you know, we need this information to be able to make a, to craft a reasonable comprehensive permit. An explanation of whether or not affordable buyers will be responsible for paying sewer connection and sewer privilege fees, or will the applicant pay those fees? The year-round residence thing, we just got the Crookedis Bluestein letter. And again, I read it, I'm not a lawyer, and there seemed to be quite a bit of qualification in there, like every other sentence, so... Now, having said that, it might be totally kosher, but, uh, we need to look at that a little bit more and, um, and then the, and then the waivers. If, if this list on the 100 doesn't jog with the 92, we would just want to know that. So, that, that's pretty much, anybody else? Things like the trash enclosure, where the trash is going, um, lighting, you know, all those things.
Property management, if they're live in, live off.
Right, we had, we touched on that at one point.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, but we didn't, it's never been a determination.
Just like everything else, well, it could be this, it could be that, so...
Right.
Ed, you want to say something specifically about this process?
Yes, about the 92 units. I may be the only person in the room, after having attended all of these meetings, that, that is really sensing an unwillingness for the developers to want to present anything based on the 92 units. And I back that up by saying, and I can, you know, Jamie can correct me if I'm wrong, and everyone in the room, but I thought I heard him say that he went to the workshops but never intended to do 92 units. And I just feel like they were just going through the motions so they could go to the Housing Appeals Committee and say, look, we tried to work with the town. But if I heard correctly and everyone else in this room heard it, he said, we never planned on doing 92 anyway. We just went to the workshops.
I'll let him answer, I did not hear that.
I didn't hear him say that, but...
I did not hear that.
Did anybody else hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's definitely not what I said. What I did say was, I went to the workshops in good faith, trying to find common ground with the board. After, after our early January meeting where we were saying, we may be too far apart and it may be time to start winding this up. Okay, let's try that. At that time, we were at 100 units. So, we went to that, and as a result of that, we ended up at 92 units. And, um, you know, I think it's obvious at this point in time that that is our threshold.
Can I ask you one question though on that, Jamie?
Sure.
At one point, you did submit an 88 unit plan.
Right.
So, what happens to those other four, I mean, why, what are those...
So, that's, that's what I brought up a little bit earlier. So, that was a different design. And in that instance, like, if you take those four duplex buildings that...
Yeah.
Are, are kind of partly defining the multifamily area.
Yeah.
We did that in response to the workshop and the work group and the comments, let's work on the streetscape, let's get the condo buildings off of there. And so, we thought that having, um, a lower price point product that's got a parking lot on one side and a street on the other made better sense than doing a single family there. And so, but basically, the economics are the same. So, if that were a single-family cottage or a duplex building, for us, the, you know, it was like, okay, well, you know, we're okay doing four of these because of their function in this specific design. And so, the difference for us between the 88 and this 92, which I tried to point out a little bit earlier and probably didn't do a great job, I apologize, is those duplexes.
But doesn't that give you, at 1.25 or 1.5 each, a lot more profit than if those are single-family houses? So, can't you take some of that?
No. So, at, at 1.25 each...
That's two and a half times four, that's 10 million.
So, I'm just saying, if it's two and a half, well, no, it's not, because don't forget, there's an affordable element. So, not everyone sells at a profit. Right?
Yeah, there are, there are units...
Two of them are subsidized by the, so right off the top. But that's true of the cottages as well. Yeah, it's 25% no matter how you cut it.
Right.
But the numbers, if it's, you know, if there's two of them, a million and a quarter, and, you know, we're, versus a cottage that was one point, or excuse me, 2.25 or in that neighborhood, they're, they're pretty close. I mean, obviously duplex has two kitchens and, you know, I, I wouldn't say...
Well, I guess I was just asking that. I mean, there might be a way for you to say, we can't go below 92. Maybe there is another way to, to get to 88.
Well, there was that plan. There was that one plan that was...
I don't understand why the plans can't kind of meld a little bit, but...
Well, I mean, this plan could, you know, if we did four cottages right there, this plan would become an 88 version. But personally, I don't think, um, the cottages would be the best way to separate that condominium multifamily area from the main road. And so, we thought this was a way to address your concerns, that we thought would also work and would also be marketable at that price point.
Right.
And I thought we sort of agreed. I, I think the sticking point is...
Is the big things in the back.
Those four buildings.
Right, but I was just trying to... Because I do appreciate the streetscape. And I think that that was a big part of the last design review or the workshop that we went through, was there were bigger buildings there. And the idea of continuing the smaller scale of streetscape was very important, but it just seems like there might be a way to get back down a little bit, I don't know.
But, again, we're not going to really, no one's going to be able to make that determination. If, if, if you do your plans and you come in and next, the next meeting say, this is our number, we're not moving, at least you, we have the plans, we can make an informed, uh, not this, yeah, ultimately, we can write a decent comprehensive permit.
That was in response to this plan, which had two, two large buildings there.
So...
So...
So, where, where are we at? We're going to do some new plans with 92?
So, um, my partner's homesick with the flu, which is why he's not here today. And, uh, certainly, our intention was to close today. If you guys want to schedule another meeting between now and the 4th and give me an opportunity to have those conversations, and there seems to be a general consensus amongst you that, you know, you're, you're open to a 92 unit plan in this format, then I think it's worth, you know, let's schedule another meeting and let's, you know, give me a chance to confer with my team. And again, we just recently, um, lost our 40B attorney, which we're in the process of, of dealing with, so...
I, I'm, I'm good with saying we're, we're, we like the concept of this plan. I'm not coming out and saying we like the plan, but we could really pretty much say whatever we want and then rate it whatever conditions are, are reasonable. We'd like the plans, we'd like the information.
I think we can do it any other way, so I have to think, we have to say that we like the concept and we need to see further information.
But are we going to be realistically, are we going to be able, if he, you know, Jamie provides all this information, are we going to be able to close the hearing next time? I mean, the, the part that you brought up that we hadn't even given, touched on is the HTC review part, which unfortunately, I think could have been dealt with more efficiently if the applicant had gone through the HTC instead of using us. But now we're, now we have, we're, we're doing it and we have to do that. So, how do we deal with that if we're closing a hearing next meeting?
We're going to need an extension.
Well, we, we, well, yes. And if, if, if we want to continue having a discussion, we need an extension. If we want to sit and deliberate...
And do our own decisions.
We can still say, we don't like this, and we would condition it thusly.
Just based on whatever information.
Well, we have a, there's, it's, it's, it's open to the public, but we don't take any more testimony. Or, or input, or whatever the heck you call it.
I just think that would be, I think that would be a real shame.
It's very difficult. I'm not, I'm not advocating that plan, by the way.
I think that would be, after all this time, I think it would be a real shame if we, um, don't give the, you know, I get it, if we have to make a decision, but if we aren't given the time to, to actually look at the information to make, to make an informed decision and, and fulfill the role that you've asked us to do for you, to serve as HTC and these other boards.
And, and at one point in time, just, again, the sewer, you're going to have to spend some hearing time on that. Once, once it's worked out between Don and, and David Gray and Weston and Sampson, that, that Don has all the information he needs and they've reached the point that they can either agree, okay, here's what the, here's what our proposal is, and it's been reviewed, and then it comes back to view, or Don agrees to disagree with Weston and Sampson, and you're going to have to have some time in your hearing, public hearing, to discuss those issues because you're going to be the one acting on it.
But it doesn't sound like we're getting that time, like, we have to...
You wouldn't be, that's why I'm, it's, it's an impossible timeframe. So, I, I'm suggesting, so I, I guess to cut to the chase, a couple of things have to happen is, need an answer from them sooner rather than later if they're going to provide the sufficient information on this 92 unit plan. Uh, and then if they're going to contemplate, you know, further, at least another hearing session after the one on the 4th or the 3rd, or whenever you do it within the current deadline. And if they're really not going to engage in that process to not leave you blindsided, let's make sure that at least all, all required information under the comprehensive permit process for the 100 unit plan is before you so that if, if you're forced to act on that, then, then you do that.
And can I ask one question in regards to the sewer? Because maybe I'm just missing it, but, you know, the, the email we had that Eleanor put in our packet or through our email, um, from David Gray responding to Don. When I went through, you know, the six, the six-inch force main, the 12-inch force main, another 16-inch force main, and a 20-inch force main, all are not recommended for, from anywhere, from there's not enough capacity or adverse impact, or should only be used, not operational, should only be used in an emergency. You know, how, I, I don't see where those two come to an agreement.
Well, that's why I was saying, there, there is a recommendation of Weston and Sampson in the January 25 proposal.
Which was the gravity?
Correct. And so, either the, either the applicant is going to agree to go forward with that or they're not.
I mean, I, based on what I'm hearing from David Gray, like, I, just as myself, as a board member, like, I wouldn't feel comfortable saddling the town with a green, thinking that any one of these was a good option because that's, we're being told it's not.
That's exactly right. And that's why I'm saying, you need time in your public hearing process to vet those issues out. You're not ready to spend time on it yet because they're still sort of going back and forth a little bit. Let's, let's make sure that, that there is no missing information and that whatever decision the applicant makes on it is based on all the available information to them.
Okay.
Um, let's make sure that Weston and Sampson can review whatever proposal they come up with. But you're going to have to spend some time in your hearing process on those issues ultimately, because you're the one making the decision. You're, you're the one who's going to decide whether you're going to go with David Gray's recommendation.
So, when you're talking about our hearing process, you're talking about the deliberation that we do after the hearing is closed.
No, no, I would recommend that that take place in the public hearing process.
Well, how's that going to happen if we have to close the hearing next Thursday?
It would be difficult.
I mean, there's no, right, that's what I'm saying.
It would be, again...
Yeah, again, you know, like Ed said, I don't mean to repeat myself over and over again, but that would be a very difficult burden.
And that, to me, is the definition of bad faith.
Yeah, bad faith, disrespect.
We have been lulled into thinking that we're moving along, and I know there's a time deadline, that's what's unique about this process. But we were lulled into thinking that we're moving forward, but we're not going to be jammed up with two weeks. And that, and suddenly, we've gone from good faith, moving along, to being jammed up and, and having to make decisions without...
But I feel like we've been jammed up for a while and this was just, we, it was like watching a train wreck. We kept asking for information and it's just now we're at the end and we, I feel like we haven't, compared to other projects we've worked on, like, this has been... I don't understand why it's so hard to get information for this project. Like, I, when, you know, St. James' Path is another example, I get it's a smaller scale project, but as Ed has said, you know, 10 units, 100 units, it's always the same information and down to like, what are we using for sidewalk materials? What's, what's the phasing? Like, did we even talk about phasing, about when the roadways are going in?
Well, we've talked, in, in, in the applicant's, not their defense, but we've talked about all of that. But unfortunately, the critical issue was site plan, and we have not come to a consensus on the site plan.
We haven't been able to come back and circle back to those issues.
No, we have not, because we have not come to a consensus. I think there is a consensus, I'm going to speak for the board, at least, there's a consensus that the concept of this plan is something that we would like to continue the process on. I don't think we're going to get it done in one more meeting, but, um, we have to start somewhere. So, it would be nice to have the plans fleshed out.
It would be irresponsible of us if we were able, if we got it done in one meeting, like, just gave it a broad brush. I just, that's not what this process is about.
Well, I also don't think the broad brush is going to be particularly comfortable.
For anyone.
Well, yeah. So, do you, do you, do you want to speak?
I would just say that, um, I think that if we're honest with one another, this is, this has been coming for a while and that as far as can we agree... this has been coming for a while and that as far as can we agree on a program or not? And it seems that the answer continues to be we're not quite getting there. And I think that's the problem, and I think the follow-up to that is to, you get to a program that's agreeable, that's, you know, we found that common ground, then, okay, let's really dive into the specifics around that particular plan, but it has been a while, it's been a year, and we haven't been able to get there. And I think, you know, this term good faith that keeps coming up in regards to the septic, I just wanted to say, Dawn and I met with David Gray and Sampson way back at the beginning of this whole process, and we were told that we could run a force main and we planned on that. And I know that Dawn has asked for information for a long, long time now. And we just got an email from these guys just, and if you click on the link in the email, there's, it'll actually expand and there's some additional information in there, some exchanges between town folks. And they acknowledged that they told us that a, that a force main is viable and that the reasons around that is because it would take more permitting and more, or excuse me, more planning and things that would be exponentially greater if we went with a gravity system. So I just think good faith, we've, we've been trying to get answers for a long time on this war in good faith.
I'm not talking about good faith. There was a proposal sent on January 25 from Weston and Sampson, and it's the gravity proposal and it's consistent with the town's planning. And, and whatever further information they need, they can, they can get that, but that information's been provided, so it's time that they respond to that. If they're, if they need further information in order to respond, that's fine, but the proposal's been put out there for them. And you're going to need public hearing time to vet those issues once they make the decision, once they get the, you know, the alleged information that they say that they need to respond to Weston and Sampson's proposal. And Weston and Sampson, even on the additional information, just sent me yesterday, asked them to itemize additional information that they would need, even on the latest proposal from, from the applicant. But again, it's, it's, you know, it's a matter of time that you need to spend in the public hearing. So either they're going to agree to provide the requisite information on the 92-unit plan or not, if they're not going to agree to that, let's get on the record tonight that whatever information that you need on that 100-unit plan, you'd better get that information and be ready to act on it if they're insisting on you closing the public hearing by the 4th, which again, several people have said it now, is a very unfortunate result, but you need to put yourself in the best position that you can to have a defensible decision.
Do we just have one more meeting? One more?
Well, one more before, we could have, we could meet every night.
Yeah.
You have one more, you have one more hearing, but you have one more hearing, then you would, you could-
No, we, I'm kidding, but we could meet between-
We could meet multiple times before the 4th.
Yeah, oh, okay, okay.
Jamie, can I just ask you a question? I feel like Ed is saying, you know, that the board can get behind the concept of the plan and then you're using the word that if we can agree with your program, and can you just, like, when you're saying program, you mean what?
92 units.
Like exactly.
Yeah, 92 units. I mean, we've been, we've been, this is, this is the same conversation we've been having since this plan was initially proposed in the workshop, and so that's the problem.
Right, so, but I think the problem is that it's, this is like a chicken and an egg, right? Because you're saying you want us to agree to 92 units and we're saying we're, we're can get behind this concept, but we can't say yes to 92 units when we don't see parking and all these other things. So if you provide all of those things, there is a chance out there that perhaps we do say, okay, 92 works and we see that you've been able to make it work. Or you go back and when you put all those things in, you say, ooh, 92 actually doesn't work, I need more space for parking or this and that. So we're not in a position, like, we can say that we're behind the concept, but your exact program, we can't say that it works because we don't see that it works. So show us and then maybe we can say yes, I don't know.
Okay, because what I've been hearing is reduce it to 40 cottages, reduce it to 80 units, reduce it to 230 rooms, these are all-
Yeah, but then show us that you can make it work the way that you have it here, right? Like, that's kind of what we, I thought anyway, again, that we were leaving the last meeting with, here's what we would like to see, and then you would come back and say, okay, well I saw that you wanted X, Y, and Z, I can do X, but I don't need to do Y and Z because I can still make it work and here's still green space and all this other stuff.
Well, respectfully, I would love to make it work with you guys. You know, that has been our goal from the beginning. And it's not, I'm not trying to rush off anywhere, but I am, there is a time where I think this process needs to be concluded and-
And respectfully, I, I agree, but I feel the same way, I would like to move forward, but we need the information to move forward.
To move forward. And also, just, you know, I think we asked for longer extensions and those were never forthcoming. It was always like one little bit at a time. We'll give you one more month, but that's it. You know, I think if, I wish you would have said like, yeah, we agree, we're getting somewhere, we're going to need three months to get all this information together for you guys, we'll give you that. But it's always been like, let's give them two more weeks and then we'll let you know in two weeks how we decide we're moving forward.
And quite frankly, some of the extensions have been totally unrealistic because you can't, nobody, nobody can do the work required in those, in those periods of time. So then we get half the information and it's very again-
Where we get this.
Yeah, where we get this, an ultimatum. So it's difficult and we're not trying to elongate the process because we love coming here twice a month. We want to, we just want to get the information on a reasonable site plan that is, that works for everybody and move forward.
Yeah.
So.
We feel the same way. I mean, we've given a whole bunch of extensions, it's been almost-
You actually-
Half at a time.
And it's also, it's not just the extension, the extension is to serve the purpose so that the information can be provided, and I agree with what Lisa was saying, it wasn't-
I don't agree with that. I mean, you know, Jamie, the extensions have come piecemeal at best. You're, you are not, you're blind and you're deaf, I think, to what the board wants and what the public wants. And I just don't think, you know, you can say that you've, you've put a lot of thought into it, I don't think you have. You guys have had a program and you've stuck with it. I think you've gone from your 150 units, you always knew you were going to get down to somewhere around 100 or 90, and you knew that was coming and you have been unwilling to truly try and make a better deal. I think you, I think you've been unwilling to really listen to what we want and what the public wants.
Completely disengaged.
You have a program, you have a program and you're going to stick with it, no matter what.
Well, I think, I think in a lot of ways, I mean, unfortunately, I'm, I am sorry to hear that, Jeff, and I, it kind of sums up the process.
I'm sorry to say it, Jamie, I'm sorry to say it, but I really feel that way.
This plan right here is a result of Cliff Bomer's workshop.
And that plan's not a bad plan, Jamie. Those buildings, those eight-unit buildings are too big. They're too big for this site, they're too big for this town, they're too big for this And if you wanted to change your program, if you wanted to let your ego take a little bit of a break-
It's not the ego, trust me.
And reduce the amount of affordable, you know, so-called affordable units that you're creating, you could make that, you could make that plan happen in a minute to something that we would agree to.
And then there's the question viability.
I think it's still viable.
I think it's viable, Jamie, I think you take away some of this, you know, some of this affordability component, which I've told you I appreciate, but I've told you that I don't think it's the right time for that.
Just to be clear, not the affordable units, you're talking about the year-round units.
I'm talking about the, yeah, the year-round affordability component that Jamie and Josh have been touting since day one, and I appreciate that, but-
We all appreciate it, but it's not in the numbers.
Yeah, not in this scale, in this location at this time, so.
Yep. So, did you want to say something?
I'd like to be, I'd like to if I could, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
My name is Ron Bamber. I came to the first 40B. Here's what I'm saying. I asked, with those 1,054 lots that are on this island that people have owned for years that are paying taxes, would you put this ahead of those people if you can't have enough room in a sewer treatment plant? The landfill right now is all contaminated, shallow and deep wells, we all know that. And you're still trucking all the sludge out, mixing it with the garbage.
Ron, we've heard all this multiple times.
Well, I'm telling it to you again so you could kindly hear it. This is a total joke that you're going to approve something like this and destroy this island. This is an historic island and these people that are trying to slam all of this and there, you're going to have the biggest lawsuit the town has ever had when this water is contaminated and the sewer treatment plant can't take it. Before the first 40B, I went to David Gray and I said, Dave, you're an expert, you're going to be at the meeting, right? He said, no, I can't go till later. I said, why not? Because my boss told me not to go. I then went to the planning board and asked, who was David Gray's boss? And it was Libby Gibson. I know what's going on. This thing should never be there, you destroyed the island already between Israel Ridge and this area.
Ron, 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 you've said this at least five times and we've heard you.
Well, here's my question, is there enough room in the sewer treatment plant for the 1,054 lots that exist that are there?
That's not before us, what's before us is this application.
Well, before you can even answer what your question is, you should know if all the lots that exist prior to this could even be built on. That's the biggest thing. You can't go selling something-
Ron, thank you, we appreciate it.
You're doing a sad job, that's all I can say.
I appreciate that too.
And I will say one thing-
I appreciate that. Okay.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Linda Durance is 511. I did-
Speaking of the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. I did read the letter that the ZDA at the last meeting asked, said they had been asking for, for months, from Jamie and Josh's lawyer. And there's a couple of things in it that are troubling to me. I'm not a lawyer, I may be married to one, but I'm not a lawyer. And they, by their own, they even say in this letter, in many different ways, that they can't back anything up for the middle income. And if they're really, it says, any conclusions or statements assessed here, stated here do not constitute a guarantee of any particular result. The middle income that they're trying to sell, if they really wanted to help do the affordable, make the 40B, double it, make it 50%. My other question is, I'm also not an accountant, but when I listen to the financials, it's mind-boggling to somebody to listen to these numbers, that the duplexes are worth $2 million, the houses, which cottages, whatever you want to call them, 2.5, but we can't make any money on this project. This project, I believe this land was bought, 13-plus acres on Antucket for $4 million, and we're tossing around these numbers. If they even just stuck with what was legally able to go in there and build the houses that were legally able to, I still see an enormous profit. And I don't understand this great weaving around of not showing your financials. You've asked for waivers for your financials? They, the, in the packet is a peer review, they say you should see the financials because we need to know if this project can't be finished, that there's money, that the town, because you did say how you were going to do it. You said you were going to clear-cut the entire property and that we would all be looking at these clear-cut of 13 acres if you were bankrupt. We have no idea what your financials are.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Is there a question in there?
No, I'd like to see his financials.
Okay, well, I think the process has been explained before that I, George, do you want to respond to the financials or should I just mumble?
I think you can.
Okay. I believe that the, the way the 40B law is written, the applicant does not need to show us his financials until such a time as there is a condition that they contend makes the project uneconomic. So when and if, if and when we ever get to conditioning something and we make it uneconomic, then we can get into that particular discussion, okay? Does that sum it up decently? Okay, so we're not going to talk about that anymore.
Real question, quick question, because I have a question on that process. Is that during the public hearing?
It can be during the public hearing if, if the, correct?
Yeah, it should be.
It should be, but if it, if it's, if we don't have any more time, because I, as, we're not coming here every night between now and April 4th, so we need more time. We need time to flesh out that plan, we need time to discuss the remaining things once we get to a consensus plan. And, you know, I'm hoping the applicant will give us that time.
We have the room.
Every night. Don't say it. On April 4th.
We have town meeting next week, so that's a thing. We have this room on April 4th. I booked it a month ago, or whatever.
Yeah, I'm not in any way advocating, what I would like to do, because it's very difficult timewise for the board and certainly I find it difficult to try to assimilate, you know, all the different permutations of what we've looked at. I thought we were moving in the right direction with this type of plan. I'm not saying every detail was worked out. I mean, again, Dawn might be doing the engineering, finding out that these turning radiuses don't meet the applicable codes, so something has to get tweaked, but that has to be done. And, and the back and the 4th, 156, we're, reserve our rights, I mean, you said that about 100 times, we know that. And, but again, I thought we were moving forward and now we're moving more than backwards as far as I'm concerned, so. What do you say?
But regardless, there's going to be some application made that we can actually vote on. We can actually discuss and we can vote on, correct? And we don't have that either-
No, because-
The 100 unit or the 92.
Right. They haven't provided all that list of things for the 100 unit.
Right.
No, I mean, I'm assuming they can just say, we're not giving you any more, correct?
Well, no, that, that would be-
Suicide.
If you want to stick with the 100 unit plan, they certainly have to provide the requisite-
Okay.
And we're not required to go through years' worth of meetings and create our own path.
No, no, I want the, if you're absolutely insistent about on going down this road, which I think is a mistake, because I think you're going, you're going to alienate the community even more than you already have, you're going to be probably tied up in some other processes for, for years, I would guess. I don't see why you'd want to do that. I would think it's much better for you to come to a consensus site plan that we can then make an informed decision on, that, yeah, maybe it doesn't fit your program perfectly. And, you know, Jeffrey said it, and I agree with most everything he said, I just think that, you know, there's a given tape here.
So, I mean, that makes three commissioners that I've heard from, you know, blind and deaf to what you guys are saying, disingenuous, and you agree with what he said relative to this plan. And if that's the case, it doesn't seem like we're close.
You're only listening to parts of what we're saying. I think we've said like-
I didn't say that at all, is all I can say.
I think we said, like, seven different ways, that we can get behind the concept of this plan, but we need more information.
All the information.
And all, you're looking for ways to say that we're not in agreement, but we're trying, like, we're trying to move it forward and, and, I don't know, I don't-
And get the information we need so we can make a, so we can make a decision.
And you may not like the decision we make, but then you have the appeal process. But let's at least get to a point where we can make a decision.
Yeah, I mean, we're asking you to be respectful of the decision we have to make.
Right.
And we need more information to make that.
And even if we go to the 100, if he insists on the 100-unit plan, we need more than two weeks to write our decision.
Do we have to go with the 200?
No, no, you get 40 days after you close the year.
No, I mean, for the public hearing. I mean, we need more than-
Well, we wouldn't even have all the information probably until the day before the meeting or three days and then, oh, yeah, you could take your whole weekend and go through everything, it's a lot of fun, but I would like it a little before then, but-
The engineer said it needed a lot longer than April 4th.
Let's do this plan, yes.
We know that.
We know that, but I'm just saying, either way, I feel like we need an extension.
I think we need-
At least two more meetings.
Again, I think we need more time, but, so what do you say?
So, again, I'm here without my partner. The intention was to close the hearing tonight. Do we want to have another meeting on the-
We're not, I don't.
Are we prepared to close the hearing tonight?
No.
No. So, I think that's off the table. So, when is the extension till?
The 5th.
4th.
Like at midnight kind of thing? How does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, midnight?
I have it as the 4th.
Right.
At midnight.
So, right.
So, we can argue, we have a meeting on the 4th?
Yeah, you would have to close the public hearing at that point.
Unless they give us an extension.
Unless they give an extension, correct.
On that day.
Or before.
Yeah.
But, you know, it, I mean, let's call a spade a spade, really. It was an ill-considered position to take tonight to come in and say, we want you to close the hearing and vote on our 100 unit plan. That was ill-considered. So, if you're upset about a couple of the comments from the board members, you know, that's your right, but that, that was ill-considered to come in, because even on the 100 unit plan, it was not reasonable to close the public hearing tonight, even on that, to even continue a dialogue on the sewer. So, you know, I would ask actually, right now, on the record, let's try to get an extension, a reasonable extension now to at least early May. And then, and then that gives you the time, it'll give Don Bracken the time to, to deal with me and Weston Sampson and David Gray and also work on his engineering for this plan if you decide to do it. And then in that, in that time period, and you can go forward with another hearing on the 4th if the board is available. And then in that time period, if you decide, you know, amongst your team, that you don't want to go forward with providing further detail on the 92 unit plan, at least tee it up properly on the 100 unit plan, so we can have a expedited process and have a legitimate public hearing on it and have a, you know, tee it up for a decision. And the one thing I'll say about HAC, I have to add this, and this is not an editorial comment, I've said a lot about, I like to try to caution a permitting board to allowing the HAC to be your permitting authority. And I'm on the record about that. But on the other hand, I have to say that the, the HAC process and the so-called streamlined process of 40B is not as favorable to an applicant as, you know, you may think it is. You get tied up in the HAC, you engage in a trial process, but the trials aren't done on consecutive days. They do one on the site, then they schedule one several months down the line. There are appeal rights, you have a potential appeal of, of project opponents going to Superior Court. You're tied up in a nightmare. And then you try the case in HAC, if the, if the town, if the, if the board, and then, you know, the, the town as the appointing authority for the board authorizing town council is unhappy with the HAC decision, you end up in Superior Court, then you end up with a potential appeal to the appeals court. So, you know, the, it, it just does not make sense for, for anybody, particularly the applicant, to force a decision before it's ready to do and, and put us into that HAC process before the case is properly teed up. You know, I'm, I'm ever an optimist. I think that, that if you continue to work with the board, you'll end up with a, with a decent approval with conditions that you can live with. And if you can't, then at least you're, you've narrowed the issues, you've narrowed the areas of disagreement to the fullest extent that you end up in HAC, and possibly you're also maybe fending off an appeal by project opponents to go to Superior Court. So, you know, I respectfully suggest it makes an awful lot of sense to at least extend to early May, let's start to tee up some hearing dates, and then, and hopefully in the meantime, you will want to provide the, the further information on the 92 unit plan. So, that's just what I would.
Thank you.
I agree. Because I think even on the 100 unit plan, you need, we need two more meetings at least.
At least.
Yeah.
So, Jamie, what do you say? An extension?
Can we take a five-minute break so I can make a phone call and get some consensus on my own side of this? Please, thank you.
Thank you.
I was hoping it would do.
Okay. So, these are the dates that you're.
So, can we use that time to talk about stormwater?
Maybe.
I deserve it. But, so just for dates.
They're so good, they're just so lemony.
How put the kind of sugar you can put?
You can't, it's too, like.
I don't know. You don't know. You don't know me.
I don't know if there's anywhere in there, but I mean, do I like mixed in all of those? And it's like. Here, these things are fine. There's one in there. Hopefully it still tastes lemony.
It's great.
Does it? Yeah, they're really.
It does, yeah.
So, it's just, it's just like almonds and lemon oil.
Thank you, guys. Here.
Kiram.
Kiram.
Okay, just check that.
I'm sorry, my glasses.
I don't know, you don't know, you don't know me.
I don't know if there's any more in there, but it'd be like mixed in all over.
Here, these things are fine. There's one in there. Hopefully it still tastes lemony.
It's great.
Does it? Yeah, they're really.
It does, yeah.
So it's just, it's just like cabbages and lemon oil.
Hey, guys. Here. Carol.
Carol.
Okay, just check that.
Glad I could, I'm, I'm with my glasses on. Let me point those out, wouldn't just fire them in my, my pistachios.
Those are, those are.
It's fun to work for the local orthodontist. Yeah.
Oops. Oh, no. Much more. How was your birthday?
Yeah, kinda. You're up.
Two. These are the standard.
Rob had fun.
He did. He lost on some of the, the oxenitis, he got his neck.
He loves shit.
He loves.
I beat out one thing.
Webber real.
Four of the gallons.
Rob will melt. And then he's like, so it's like to go and.
I already did it.
Tell him.
No.
I missed Sylvia's concert tonight.
Rachel Hope Artis has made, I see you looking at your phone.
Me?
No, it's me.
Oh. I feel like Rachel should be like our consultant, like, you both need to put on more blush.
I'm sorry, how do we look? I'll ask.
Especially if I look washed out, I didn't put any. Now?
Well, I didn't mean it, I didn't.
No, I didn't, yeah.
Sylvia had her little concert tonight for, um.
Is this, uh, Utah?
Yeah, for the, at the Summer Street Church for the music convention, it's like, of course, because they do, when they have, they had, they had all, I think, I think this time they had all the age groups like do their own thing, they do a song together.
Yeah.
They have to practice elsewhere. I'm not sure how this is gonna go. That is super cute.
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Maybe, I, maybe it's there, or maybe it's us.
Is it from this tape? It may be this tape or.
It's a tape. Yeah, maybe.
Oh, I have some candy.
No.
Yes, the, yes, the tape is still on, and your lovely.
Your, your lovely wife is listening to our conversation.
She's laughing.
She's saying that we look fabulous.
No, no, these aren't lemon. I just mixed them.
She said the.
Those are almonds, they're chocolate covered almonds. Yeah, they're not, um.
Those are the one, that's the one I ate the first time.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was like, oh, I could eat all these old things.
Oh, no. No, I just put them in this, I, I don't know, this bag, I don't know where it's stuck.
You just stick it all in there?
So once this is gone, I can.
Oh, yeah.
They are good, I think, from the Starbucks, South Island.
You see another member? There's too many, you gotta walk away. Five hundred feet, everyone.
Ed, Rachel says, please ask Ed to look at his phone, and he wants to know if you wanna have it during Friday or Saturday.
She can hear you.
Oh, my God, how sad.
Well, Jamie's not back yet, right?
Yeah, she's there. Yeah.
The town meeting is what, Monday and Tuesday night?
So they didn't send it to us?
I don't know, I mean, I thought it was just.
Did you, did you see that decision?
Yeah, I know, I signed it, and I passed it on to Jack.
It's right here. Your decision?
That's the cottage. Did you, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Usually it goes to.
So I can't wear the all-cream.
No, I believe you.
I'm just thinking, give me one, we're having, we have a meeting Thursday night.
Which one's this one?
That's cottage board, it's, um.
Okay.
Got the condition.
Yep.
No, I skipped past here. I have like a, like one of those leather things, small wrenches at the bottom of my bed, it's all filled with arms.
But I'm just curious what that looked like.
I don't have.
It didn't have the.
Yeah. I'm sure, I'm sure I have it somewhere.
But.
Ed, would it be okay to ask, you can make a good point when you get all this information, it's like, would it be more difficult for someone to, like, maybe have the package for them together? It's, it's, you know, it's challenging to be like, this, this, all of this big time, if they've got it right, even just for this small number of times.
Oh. Is even that first one? Okay. Okay. I'd love to go to that. Is there a, 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 is